Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Kevin Johnson can lead us.
Let us introduce you to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, this brings us to our good news portion to come see the high school TDA program. Mr. Olson.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for giving us this opportunity to come and present to you tonight about the Virtual Academy. My name is Greg Olson. I'm the lead instructor.
I'm Jennifer Morgan, the counselor for our Virtual Program.
So what we wanted to do, we were given an opportunity today to talk to you guys about some of the things that we're doing in Virtual Academy and what we think the Virtual Academy can do for the district.
Do you want the lights off?
I just hope I can work this. I need to be the technology guy. Can you guys... It's not working? Not working. So, a quick definition of the Virtual Academy. We see ourselves as a school without walls, or a classroom without walls. Where we offer, you can see here, self-paced standardized virtual curriculums with a lot of support. In our department, we have myself, Mrs. Morton, who's our counselor, who deals directly with just our Tecumseh Virtual Academy kids. We also have a mentor teacher that the kids check in with. We have an instructional assistant, and we have a secretary that helps us with this.
So plus me at TDA is we're ready when they're ready. So it's, not every student has a straight path in their educational career, so some students have, they all have ups and downs, but some have bigger ones than others. So we're able to meet students where they're at, and we're able to customize the curriculum. So if they're behind in credits or wanna go forward, they're able to do that, which you can't always do in a traditional classroom. We have lots of course options for our students, including AP and honors, and credit recovery as well.
So we serve the entire district. Right now, we have kids that range from second grade all the way through 12th grade. We also have students in our, that we work with that are post-high school. So when the kids come into the seat time waiver program or Tecumseh Virtual Academy, they actually age out at 20. So if a kid's not ready to graduate at 17 or 18 years old, we're allowed to keep them in the district for another two years. So what that means for us is an additional two years of FTEs for those kids as well, as they're working through, trying to get their diploma. We also serve new enrollment kids and middle college kids. We do credit recovery for students, so a lot of times what we get is kids that come into our program from other school districts where they can't support these kids, or they get suspended or things like that. We do a background check on them, and then they enter our seat time waiver program. And so we're educating them from home, and we're doing so at a relatively minimal cost. We'll show you what that looks like in a couple minutes. You can see here, we support over 300 kids this year. We'll talk about the curriculum a little bit, but we just went to a new curriculum that has GED prep, SAT prep, ACT prep. We also support NWA. We can give the ASZAD if we want as well. And something that we're really excited about this year through the new platform is we can support all teachers through this opportunity called Flex Assignments. So, for example, if a student, if a teacher's in a classroom with kids struggling in math or science or whatever, we can actually build them, the teacher can build a classroom online, take out the standards that the kids need, and push it directly to the kid. So not only are we supporting virtual kids, but we're also supporting public school teachers in a public school classroom with kids as well.
So Greg mentioned our new platform. So we switched to Adventum this year. So far, we've had really positive comments from students and our teachers. I know that we both have enjoyed it much better. There's better reporting and tracking for our students. So it does offer over 300 different courses, including four courses, but also electives, including CTE and career prep classes as well. There's also a diagnostic tool that allows us to assess where students are, again, I referred to that earlier, but if there's holes in their learning, we're able to fill those holes in and move them forward without having a repeat curriculum that they have already mastered. Again, Greg kinda mentioned the Flex Assignments, but that's a really cool feature we were playing with a little bit today, but teachers are able to pull standards from different classes, add their own, take out things that they've already covered, so we can really customize courses through that. There is a full course catalog available on it that Tecumseh, I think it's on the Virtual Academy site, if you're interested in looking at the courses.
We also have another platform, and I just wanna back up real quick. One of the things that sold us this year on the Adventum platform was this opportunity for us right here through NWA. This is a program they call Exact Path. So what lower-income teachers and high school teachers for that matter will be able to do is they'll be able to put a kid's NWA score in online. That platform will then determine what that kid actually needs, spit the curriculum back out to the teacher, the teacher can then pump that back out to the kid. So for the first time in a long time, we're intentional about promoting NWA scores and raising NWA scores. So that was something that really sold us on the product. We're, in the past, we didn't have that opportunity with those curriculums. The other thing that we really like about Adventum is we actually have a rep and we have a consultant attached to our account. So at any time that we have issues, we can directly connect to the consultant, who is a former teacher and understands how to use this software in and out. And so we've been working hand-in-hand with that. The NWA training is coming to us in October. Jen and I will be trained in that, in how to use Exact Path. And then we are gonna push it out to the entire district, all the way down to all the buildings, so that all the teachers can use this. And again, it's just not virtual kids or seat time waiver kids, it's TPS kids. Then we have MobiMax. A lot of the elementary schools are already using MobiMax. We have a lot of younger kids on MobiMax right now. The beautiful thing about MobiMax that we like is, again, the diagnostic piece. So, for example, a kid takes a class. He starts in math. He takes the pre-test. That pre-test determines where the student learns, at the student's grade level. They just start moving on grade level through standards. If they're not, they go back and say, here's the standards the student's missing, and they start to build the curriculum on that way. So the student again, fulfilling the gaps in the learning atmosphere, and the kid's not being pumped back into third grade or second grade. It's continuing to move his peers, where he's getting extra work and extra support. And again, this is something that the classroom teachers can use as well. Sorry. So we wanted to be able to show you guys exactly kinda how we work in the TDA program. The entire TDA program staff, all of the TDA staff is about $200,000, but because we serve so many at-risk students, Jen and I's salary, a large portion of that is paid through 31A money. So you can see, about $81,000 of our salary comes from grant money. So that doesn't cost the district anything. Software and licenses is about $12,000. But then when you consider how many students we actually serve, and how money, how much it costs to do that, you can see it's a pretty cost-effective way to educate people. The one thing that we wanted to talk to you guys about is this isn't us trying to take kids out of a classroom. What we're talking about is trying to develop a revenue stream for the district to continue to support teachers in the classroom while at the same time educating kids where we need to educate them. And just, point of interest, just in the last release, we enrolled 22 kids. And so when that happens, basically what we're getting is school of choice kids coming to us because they're leaving other districts. And we'll talk about the support that we were here to ask for from the board, because we see this number, we could grow that after mention.
So moving forward, I think Greg kinda touched on that in the last slide, but we are giving kids referred to us from other school districts, word of mouth from other kids that we've had or still have. But we really feel like if we're able to promote and market the program, that we could bring in a lot more students. Because so many parents have said to us, I wish we would've known about this. We had no idea, but we talked to the right person. So I actually got a call too from a parent yesterday. Their student, they wanna stay at Blissfield, but her daughter is a credit short to graduate. So they don't have the online availability there. So we could also partner with schools to be able to help those students stay at their home district, but provide them that extra credit or two to graduate on time. Adult education is another big piece. So through our online platform, you know, it's no extra cost. We already have all the technology that we need, but we would like to offer, or look into offering adult education, because in our community, there's really only one place to go, and it's McKinley in Adrian. And I don't think I've ever successfully put a student there. We've tried to refer many students who have aged out of our system. We've had to send them their way, but they're pretty picky about will they take, and I'm sure there's a reason for that. But if we were able to keep them here in our district and educate them, then we have a better chance of seeing those people graduate with a high school diploma. So we are researching the funding options for adult ed, but one thing we had talked about was maybe it's where we would offer it as a per-class kinda situation at this point, so we can get that straight now. Another thing we wanted to look at too, and this would obviously be board approval, but the possibility of a Michigan merit curriculum diploma. So what that means, and this would not be for most students, this would be for probably one or two students per year, but it's only the 18 credits of required classes, so none of the elective credits, but we can still issue the student a high school diploma. We have a student this year, she's had lots of bumps in the road, but she has a, has a baby. She is currently actually in jail, and she could benefit from this. You know, and we're holding her, you know, we have to keep her longer because she's got these elective credits to do, but there are some cases that it might be, you know, positive for that student and for us as well, to be able to offer that diploma.
So when I first got here and took this job, I sat down with Mr. Mills, and I said, so what is this job? He goes, Greg, I don't know. Just build it and tell me what's gonna happen later on. And he did tell me, said, what's gonna happen though is this program, he said, nine years ago when we started this program, it was like this. And it's gonna outgrow its resources, and we have, and we're gonna continue to grow, outgrow our resources. And that's where we're asking for you guys to help us. We can help the district if we have some support from the board in terms of marketing, in terms of buying extra homework. We don't need the extra licenses. We have the license to support what we need. But we feel like we have a lot of markets in this community that we think we can help, help the school district. One of them, UNL, Del Ed. Summer school is a big opportunity for us as well. Last year, we had over 70 kids taking summer school. We don't really market that very well. That's an opportunity that we do very well, that most school districts don't even operate in, they don't even touch it. We have a lot of kids that come from districts all over, giving us ample opportunity to create revenue in the summertime. So we really kinda see our department as a 365-day-a-year department. We operate in the summertime, we operate on the weekends, we operate at night. Our kids are working all the time. So we just need the staff to support that, especially with the adult ed. We really feel like that's a market, one, that needs attention for those people, but two, is an opportunity that we could tap into, really create some revenue for the district. Because like Ms. Morgan said, to get into McKinley, you have to have so many requirements, and then the working parent who needs the work has to go to school, has to sit in a classroom, has to do that. What we're saying now is, hey, we can remove that time constraint, we can remove the walls, and we can give you an opportunity to get a high school diploma. So we're looking into those ways and we can help that. But again, that's an opportunity for us to generate some revenue for the school district, to pump back into the school district where we need it. Any questions for us?
Is there any marketing or any way this would be of use to homeschoolers?
Absolutely. We could, so, we get a lot of homeschool kids that come in. And what we tell the homeschool parents is, the burden of education is on you. You have to prove it to the state that you've done the requirements, you've made the grades, you've done all these things. It puts a lot of onus and burden on the parent. We can take those homeschoolers in now and give them everything they need, and we can support that education electronically.
How many homeschoolers do you have?
I think off our hand, we probably, well, I can tell you right now, we just took in one today. We just had one that was in our building. She was at the middle school for a couple years. She got, she went homeschool, and now she's back. It just happened today.
I would say 10 of 15 students that, well, we could also, for people who wanna continue to educate their students at home for some of the core classes, we could offer a lot of this and some of those other things that are really hard to do at home. For homeschool?
Yeah, we can support, we can support K-12. We can support K-12. MobiMax is K-8, and that is a skill-based opportunity, so those kids would get a pass/fail grade for that. We have curriculum for K-6 through Adventum, and they would get a letter grade for that.
So, what kind of question are you asking?
Well, that would be something we would have to start to research as far as what it would cost. We, to get on the radio, to get a newspaper, I know we had a billboard out in town one time. Right now, what's going on is when a kid gets to a point where the school district can't handle a letter more, they're at the brith's end, they're saying, go to Tecumseh. Go to Tecumseh. They'll be able to take care of you guys.
We'd like to get ahead of it, though, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Like, we'd rather get those students, right?
Before it gets to that point. So for us to be able to research it, we wanted to be able to present it to you, say, here's what's going on right now. Middle college is another opportunity. I think that we're not doing a very good job of promoting on. Me, Jen and I, outside of the ISD, we have the largest middle college population in the county. I think that's an attractive incentive as well for people to come to Tecumseh. To be able to get those college credits for CTE certification, I think is a good one, Steve.
Do any of these classes have like a certification? Like quick books class, I mean, like applied class, like quick books?
CTE?
We have a lot of CTE courses that do, that offer those types of things, that give skills, and then we could, what we really wanna get into is that, pump the CTE, get them to Tech Center, be able to support both of those. A lot of kids that figure to go to Tech Center, possibly work as well. That's a lot of our population, is kids wanna work. And so they'll come in first, second, third hour online, go home and work, and we can still support them for the rest of the time.
Do you think other schools would be going in somewhat harder with us as far as getting the word out? Not necessarily money-wise, but maybe through their...
A lot of schools send their kids anyway. You know, I'll tell you plenty of the biggest ones that refers them. Blissfield is another one. So I think because they don't have the structure in place, we just need to let them know. We need to do a better job of all the opportunities.
How appropriate is other like this in the state?
Well, that's where I was gonna go. We have Research Oxford Virtual Academy, which is the largest in the state. It serves over about 2,000 students.
Oh, wow.
We've actively been working with them for the last couple years. One of the opportunities that they present in other school districts is they will license out their teachers. So if the teachers don't have the, if they don't have the support there, they would make us a teacher of record. We would charge them a fee to do that, and then we would monitor student in that school district. That's how, that's what Oxford does, and they do very well. But we're not to that point yet, but that's where we see this thing we could go. We really wanna be the premier school of choice online platform, and the county can be able to support all the districts. And that's what she was talking about with Blissfield. There's kids right now in surrounding districts that can't take additional classes because they're button seats at the kids, so to speak, but are behind in credits. That's where we feel we can come in. Charge a kid such-and-such bound class, they take the class online with us at night. We monitor it, we send it back to the school district. This kid's took that credit, and we pull it back.
So you're looking for a motion for us to smash, for us to put forward a kid?
Once we come back with some positive numbers, yeah. We, I mean, we're not gonna come back and say, we need this amount of money. We're gonna say, this is what we've researched. What we wanted to do is put it on the radar for you guys to say, these are some things that are going on right now, but we wanted you to be aware of it if you weren't. Here's our plan coming forward, and we're gonna come back to you guys with some real numbers about what it is we're actually doing.
Do you know Oxford's breakdown? I mean, like, what percentage are the kids, like, in Tecumseh helping make a credit, or, you know, what is the mix?
Oxford works in Oakland County. They are 100% online. None of their kids are button seat kids. So every kid that they, their, their building would look similar to this. And it would be like you're walking to an office building, and teachers sitting in cubicles, kids come in and meet. They have academic support rooms, where kids come in and get academic support. It's really more like a college-type atmosphere, where they have office hours set in, kids go on those kinds of, but they serve the entire Oakland County community. I mean, there's kids from all types of different districts that go there.
So if I wanted to take a French class or whatever, and we didn't offer it at my school, I could take it?
You could there, yep.
They also have seats all around the Oakland County area, so not just here in Oxford, but different locations.
Within that county?
Correct. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Mr. Olson, one last thing. Could you send us a copy of PowerPoint or anything?
Yeah, I was gonna send it to those guys that they wanted to put it online to, so parents.
Greg, thank you very much, sir. This brings us to our first public comment portion. It's on agenda items only. The agenda is full. We have speakers limited to three minutes. Do we have any revisions, changes to the agenda?
I got one. Can we add that we all sing "Happy Birthday" to the song?
And Josh.
How old are you?
Hold on. That is old as hell. Alright, can I get a motion through the agenda? Any discussion?
Aye.
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 Schedule reports, Nikki.
We all receive your normal monthly financial reports. There is an aberration from the normal monthly expenses in there. Notice the phone lease, $30,000. I always have a big guy that's, he's literally there. Next month, today actually, I did the proreversals. So next month will look very small, but that's only because we did the proreversals. I'm just warning you that you have those reports. It's not a mistake.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions about the monthly reports?
The phone lease payment, is that any of you?
Yes.
And then, you may not be able to answer this one, but I noticed that we had, it looks like this, it's, I looked up the website, but it looks like it's a way to analyze athletics through puddle?
Yes.
So how does a program for basic football, boys' throw, basketball, volleyball, soccer, and cross? It's like a video platform, so you can tape the games and see what they did. So every kid has access to those, they can watch, you know, your specific plays. So it's just a platform, video platform, basically.
Okay.
Our league mandates the most awards.
And I noticed we bought a big piece of equipment for the band. Do we have insurance on that? Does anybody know?
Yes, we have insurance on it, and actually, we received half of the money from a foundation, from a private donation too. So not all of that is ours.
Oh, the floor reserving, this is, again, probably not a question for you. But is that something that we can't do in-house? Does anybody know?
Reserving what floor?
Well, wood floors, I would.
There was, there was one for like five grand, and then there was another one.
Is that?
That's a gym, isn't it?
Yeah, gym floor.
Yeah, that's a...
At north.
It doesn't say.
Yeah, it was at north.
I thought somebody said they were also doing one in the middle school. Weren't there two of whom we were with?
I saw, oh, the other one. Main gym floor, I think that might be the, that was under Campbell Projects.
That was the middle school, or Compass, rather.
Both were done. High school and middle school. I was talking about is, my first year, we had a earmark to redo the floor. It isn't house. And it was completely messed up. So we had another company come redo the floor, so put the gym out for like three weeks.
Okay.
So they tried it in-house, and it, this is, it's not an easy task to do, so do the right, we kinda outsourced the last couple years.
It was outsourced when I was the athletic director, and before.
How often do they do it?
The, the main gym at Compass was annually, because they have all the kids coming in from outside. They wear the same shoes outside. They wear P E class, and there's dirt and stuff in it. It just scours the surface right off. The high school gym floor was a little better, but it gets used for, you know, P E, and we have all types of events in there on the weekends and things, so it did, it could be...
Hi. I'm honored to appreciate that, everybody, except for kind of passing by for a pleasant. Well, thank you for renewing contract. I appreciate that for summer. There's not too much to update on since we're about a week and a half in. Our biggest push is getting our families through reduced applications through. We're, their previous year's application spiders on October 7th is the date. So we're processing at least hundreds a day that are coming through paper wise or electronic. So that's our biggest push. Once we get all that done and filed, that's when we begin our breakfast program that we have at our school. So we deliver a breakfast bag to all of our three kids that are qualifying. So they have something every morning to eat. And then some families that are reduced and full pay also sign up for the program as well. So we're hoping to get that started about September 23rd. So our, our date for that and all that stuff. Our two applications for beginning of the year have been put in. The one for the school nutrition program and for C C F P, which is sponsored by the GSRP program and stuff. So we're waiting for the state to approve that. They're moving slowly on it. So it should be in, I believe, September they come back with approval, and then we'll see if that's after that. This year, TPS is scheduled for their three-year state review. So three years ago, the state came in, reviewed two of our schools. They'll come in again this year and choose two schools to do. Last year, there were those three years that was, at that time, it was TA and Bear Park that they came in and did. They have not revised the schools they're doing at, or the date that they're gonna do it on. As soon as I know the type of information that passed along, so you guys are aware. One of the things that they are going to look at is the school wellness program policy that I sent out for a preview for you all to look at and see how comfortable you are with it. I updated it this summer based on the state's tough look they put out and the recommendations they asked to have go into the wellness program. The other area that I wanted to make sure you guys all had was the mail charge policy. USDA requires every school district to have and put in there for your review. It's the one that's been in place for quite a few years here, but just so that you guys have in front of you to look at and make sure you're comfortable with the charge policy, so that you're working on that. The one biggest one we get, just so that you're aware, is to refuse our child lunch. A lot of times what that boils down to is that a child has come up with à la carte items. A bottle of beverage, a bag of chips, and at that point, you know, if they're negative in their account, we obviously tell them, they're not allowed, they can't charge that. That's not considered a lunch. But if they are in the negative in their account, and they come up and they have a stated proof of lunch, we just use them. So there's, that's one of the biggest misconceptions, that we get home calls out from parents is we refuse their child lunch. But often times, it's not, it's the ask about the true child. Where we're at this moment.
I assume that whoever explains something.
Yes.
My favorite.
They usually don't stand around and listen, though. I know, and I'll say that. In the high school, they don't stand around and listen to that explanation.
I have a palate courage. She isn't.
We may see her. Did you have any other questions on the mail charge policy or anything? I will say one thing we do in our district is, for the alternative meal, if they, if that is something that they have to do, we actually have one of our extreme measures if we were to do it. Most districts either refuse a child a meal regardless, or they offer a cheese sandwich. We just do, we do a soy butter and jelly sandwich, something a little bit more substantial than a cheese sandwich, because I would be very surprised if we got cheese sandwiches as an alternative meal. Because it's not the child's fault. It's not the child's fault. So that's our biggest example.
Do we have a lot of deaths that hasn't been dated?
Actually, no. One of the things I started when I came on is when our seniors graduate, I go out, a lot of times I call the families, and would you like this returned to you, or do you wanna donate it? And most families donate it back, and then it goes to kids that have had problems or issues being their belt, and you know, school. To kinda clear that up. And we do also have a couple individuals within our district who, like you made about this, that periodically through the school year give us donations to help their balances for kids that may not have been free at the beginning of the school year, but then became free, and they are sitting, have an added balance on their preference, or the reduced kids who will help into their accounts to hold on.
Alright, discussion, I guess. Just a copy of this.
So we get a bid from Perry Prok and MT. MT is now owned by Xerox.
Correct. Can we get your help on this?
Sure.
Do you want me to project it or answer questions? Who would you like?
Project it.
And answer questions, why not?
Yeah.
All right, it's gonna reboot for an update, of course.
Oh, so we only got two quotes here?
Yeah.
Yes.
There aren't a lot of companies though, right?
There really aren't, no.
Is there at least a third?
Well, there, there's a lot of companies that could get it out to you. So, we need to get it out to Canon, um...
Tereco.
Tereco, Tassano, uh... A lot of different companies that could get it out to you.
Why have we been with, uh, this company, we're with MT business for so many years?
Uh, they handle most of the, all of the schools, actually, in Illinois County, I believe.
Yep, including Ager and Golder. So... Um, who do you normally get bids from? I mean, obviously, every year, when, or every time the, the contract's up, you go off for bids again, right?
Uh, I haven't been here that long.
Okay.
This was started, um, this, uh, process was started before I came in.
And the current contract is ten thousand dollars a month. MT did about six thousand dollars a month. All new machines. Increased color. Last time black and white. Perry did is round number seventy-two hundred, where are you at right now? Left, no, excuse me, it'd be sixty-two hundred without file.
Yes, there is, yes, thank you. So, yeah, currently we pay approximately twelve thousand dollars. Uh, we print a lot that goes up to, I think the highest we sell is around fourteen thousand dollars. Um, so with absolutely no overage, in this case scenario, it's gonna be that's ten thousand ninety-five. With the proposed solution from MT, uh, that would drop down to fifty-nine, sixty-nine. And then with our typical overages, uh, it would be a little bit higher, sixty-four hundred. Uh, but they do include the paper cut software which would help us limit printing, especially color printing. So that can reduce.
That comes for the drop from fourteen to six?
It does, yes.
Or ten to fourteen to six? Six to sixty-five, whatever.
Yeah, we usually pay an overage of, of some amount.
Have we gone back through the schools to see what we actually need to make sure we don't, you know, there may be one place where we have a machine that's not, you know, doesn't have enough output and another where we've got overkill. We kind of looked at what's going on at all the schools.
So they're fairly well balanced as far as output right now. Um, I would, I would be on board to reduce the number of machines we have, uh, but the administrators are gonna have some input, comment?
Well, unless, I think we need to do an analysis of how much each machine is being used. How often it's down over a sixty-day period. And maybe these machines are only rated for fifty thousand dollars. Maybe it's better to get just the two machines, give one that's rated at a hundred thousand dollars. There's not enough information here as far as I'm concerned to make the decision. Even if we're making something through right now, all we're gonna do is take that money. If they're all into the new lease, we're just gonna kick that money down the road. So if they hit, there's some new machines and they're old.
So I thought we didn't pay with the machines?
We paid, we paid monthly lease, so you're paying interest on that lease, so that's a fact. When's this contract up? April.
I'm under any impression there is no cost to look at this whole contract, it would just be wiped out. Because Xerox bought, because Xerox brought MT technology.
Yeah, but, um, Nicky, who do we write the check to for the leases or something?
Wells Fargo.
Wells Fargo, Wells Fargo's gonna want their money.
Well, that's supposed to be paid care by Xerox.
Yeah, but they're gonna wrap it into our lease, that's our new lease, so without it now, I mean, that, we're just gonna throw seventy-three thousand dollars away.
It sounds like we need to see.
That's not what I understand it to be.
So they're willing to end our new con, our old contract today? If we sign up for new machines and it's gonna cost less money?
Right.
Yeah.
Why would they do that?
Well, for one, Xerox bought MT technology, we used to be a repo company. I mean, it's, it's a business for them, they don't wanna lose the business, they wanna get the Xerox replaced, use a repo machine, which our machines are eight years old or better. Because this situation has been ignored for a couple administrations.
Important question, has anyone had a legal counsel looking at the contract to verify that we are stuck with it or not?
It was looked at in spring.
It was looked at and we are definitely stuck with the cost.
We are stuck with it.
Okay.
We would have to pay?
Yeah.
If we switch.
Who, who said that?
The attorney of the ISP, we sent him back in February or March.
Then we switch to a new company?
Yeah, we tried to break that.
But what you're saying is you are under the impression that if you go with them, they're going to.
Take care of them.
They'll take care of them.
I, I think we need to see that contract, see if we're gonna change that contract.
Devin, what other companies would you get bids from? I mean...
Uh, I believe there's another company that Joel Billings had started to work with, AOS, we got a bid. Uh, there is an existing bid for them, but it's higher than the current prices.
Of this action?
It's higher than ten?
No, it's higher than the two proposals.
Suzanne, if it goes up to bid, we have to put it out to bid to everyone.
Right, anybody can bid on it, right.
So Nicky would have to go through the whole.
But even though if anybody can bid it, there's probably three or four companies that are the best companies and the most, you know, I doubt if they're all equal. It's all, it's probably the top three.
And that's why I'm saying, right now, when they're telling us what machines we need, we need to do our own study to figure out what machines we really do need. We don't need a car salesman telling us this is what you need.
Well, we ought to be doing that, right.
Right, so I think we need to study this more, figure out how often machines go down, how fast are the ones we got right now? How many containers we put down, black and white and color, and do that for sixty days and see what we come up with. Then we need to figure out exactly what we need in each building. Maybe we don't need three copies, maybe we only need one that's three times as fast as Russell's, this cabinet, with the volume of five hundred thousand copies a month, so it's gonna stay up much longer. That's a major issue, so I think that's what we need to do, do that. So, because, you know, these guys are just wrapping, I mean, this lease here is six, that's a term, but, you know, it's at forty-four, sixty-nine, so they'll take them at seventy-two thousand, wrap it into it. Perry Protec here is at, you know, twenty-six fifty for the lease. Without the volume, so the MTI or Xerox or whatever, they are definitely wrapping that remainder of our lease into, um, costs. Big difference.
MT is, I, I understand, you can say they're wrapping in their proposals less than Perry Protec without wrapping it.
Uh, because I'm just looking at the lease.
The lease line.
Just the lease line, so MT is at forty-four, sixty-nine.
Yeah, but MT has their service built into that, right, the black and white service.
Yeah, but those, that doesn't cost much either, you know, those are, those are two tenths of a cent black and white.
Well, it doesn't really matter what column the money's in, if the total was less, the total is less.
Right. If I took out the maintenance compared with what they did, it's actually four thousand thirty-seven dollars. Maintenance for black and white would be like twenty-five, thirty-seven. Maintenance on color would be fifteen hundred. Not knowing what they would actually charge for individual overage.
Right. Is there a plan to try, if we did wait and the lease was up, to try to spend less money?
Um, it could be a little bit less from MT.
But it's ten thousand period, right?
It's five thousand dollars a month we're losing. We have one bad.
Yeah, that's hard now.
But we need to determine what we need and then.
I agree with that.
To be, you know, ordered properly, then we gotta bid it out, we just gotta switch companies.
Right.
I think we gotta bid it out, find out what we need and we bid it out. I think it's somewhat cheaper yet.
You know, one of the things that I'm looking at here is currently our colored overage is really high. I think, you know, one of the things we could do right now is just look at, I know that these, this, the printers themselves and copiers themselves have default settings and some of them are default to color. We, if we haven't done this, we should probably set the default to black and white. But I think if we could reduce our colored copying right now, that would, you know, be a small savings to get us through the next couple of months. But I, I agree with, you know, we need, we need more information. We definitely need to look at what we have in each building and what we need in each building. We need to look at color versus black and white, who really needs color, who doesn't?
Yeah.
And then we need to understand what's going on with that, whatever is seventy-two thousand dollars.
Can you?
If that's being rolled into this or if it's, if they're truly liking it.
So do you have a way of knowing how many are the machines sophisticated enough so you can say this year, eight million were printed from this, or eight thousand?
Yeah, we can, we can, we can get print counts per machine.
Okay, color and versus non, that's all you start with the overage.
Yeah. Now, do our, our current setup does not have badge capabilities, correct?
It does not.
But then, I, I think that that would be another thing that we'd want to look at going forward is, you know, have a badge system and set the defaults on that and sort of who can print color.
That one part of this, right?
It is, yes, the paper cut software is built in.
And our lease is up when?
April.
April first, thirtieth?
I believe it's April first, on the type of contract.
So we should get the ball rolling on?
Yes.
Yep, studying.
And I think there's a possibility to do that.
Why wouldn't our guys do it?
She's got all the numbers from accounting to see what, what, any.
Oh, I see, money-wise as far as, yeah.
Yeah, so she's the one that's gonna have to bid it out too. She'll, of course she'll, yeah, talk, dead on.
Right, well, yeah, they should be driving how many machines with an admin administration team.
I think the other piece of this that we have to remember is that we've been talking about building reconfiguration and that could change the needs in the buildings significantly. So to make a decision right now before we even discuss that.
Well, just before you rearrange your house, still the same furniture.
Not necessarily.
Well...
Depends on how many students are in each building and how many teachers and, I, I think it could have a dramatic effect on the actual needs of this building.
I would agree with that, redistributing the student load is longer, redistribute the load on the copiers and equipment.
Well, we've been in this contract for how many years? I mean, we moved three years ago, so apparently they figured it out just now.
Yeah, doesn't mean it's.
Right. Doesn't mean it's optimized.
Right.
Just means it's still working.
But the upside is, the intent is to have a plan in place by Christmas break, so we'll go before we go into bid for the contract.
Right.
It's kind of sounds like we need to start, we're gonna do bids, we need to start doing bids in January, I guess.
Nicky, what's the, the timeline is workable to put the bid out or put the request for bids out in January and have all the?
Okay, so we have between now and the end of the year then to?
To know what we need.
Right.
Well, we'll probably wanna make a decision about time that piece, that piece is up.
Yeah.
So she could put, she'll have everything ready.
Yeah, but I meant that by the end of the year, we.
Oh, this year.
Yeah, the study, yeah.
Yeah, no, 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 no. This year.
This year.
Channelize Reagan?
Right, uh, seventh and eighth grade man textbooks.
Okay, so the seventh and eighth grade man textbooks, um, one half of the seventh grade is using, uh, Reveal. The textbooks are here for that and one half of the eighth grade is using it and those textbooks are here. They're not just, I think those are distributed to Mr. and Mrs. Bell once a.
Okay, so we don't have to order anything?
No, we're, we're good.
What do you mean a half? What's the other half?
The, one teacher in each grade level is gonna use, um, the Reveal, um, Broadhill product that's, um, presented. Put in the Alex software, the other half are going to use the old textbooks and then use, if they have the Alex software along with it. So that's half the teachers are using it and half of are not, they're all using the Alex software. And then the high school, all, all Algebra One, all Geometry and all Algebra Two will use Broadhill and Alex. That's something they're going to do as, uh, this, they want to get their high school. And, and Jan Garner will use, uh, the Broadhill and Alex for, for seventh grade algebra, which is the same algebra the ninth graders get.
All right, um, no action items, so that brings us to the superintendent's report.
Okay, the school opening up day, it was, uh, a pretty good kickoff. I, I, it's funny, you look at it from context of being in the building versus the district and it's, I, I put a lot of miles on, opening day, actually opening week. And, um, we have glitches to be sure with our bus timing right now. Today was better, I was over with Josh at, uh, Compass and, and I, I can only speak about Compass primarily, but, um, I think the staff is great about getting out there, it's been too slow getting the kids out of there. I talked to Shannon today, there's a couple tweaks that'll begin tomorrow to try and streamline that a little faster. We have kids waiting too long outside of Compass to get picked up. Probably two-thirds of the buses are there in plenty of time and then a third of them are too slow to get there. So she's concentrated, Shannon, is concentrating on speeding that process up. Shannon is leaving on Friday, she's been a trooper, she has not walked away from that responsibility in any way, shape, or form. We did speak with her supervisor today as well to see about when we can expect a replacement and the answer was, we're looking. So if anyone wants to be a transportation supervisor, there's a job that's open, pays fairly well too. Um, that job, that job is, is open and they're looking for somebody to fill it. Um, budget recommendations, several times since I started coming to board meetings in May, I've heard and, and or quotes in the paper before I came, heard members of this board say that you wanna try and get more money into salary so we can attract and retain the best employees. I've been trying to chip away at that and I, I certainly didn't do it when I first came in here. Um, but over the summer, that's something I've been analyzing, Nicky's helped quite a bit. Actually, I come up with ideas and she does all the work, but. There are some things we can do here to try to kind of streamline our budget operations. There are no home runs to get, it's just a general tightening up of what our school budget is and try and get, make resources, financial resources available so we can get our, our starting teacher pay up as an example. Our, our administrative pay is pretty low. I mean, especially when you look at school districts our size, it's, it's not very high. So we need to free up, to do that, we need to nip and tuck money from certain areas that I've identified several of those. Um, we're in the process of doing it. Uh, I will definitely share that with whoever the new superintendent that comes in is, because that's, um, it's, it's, you know, the old line is you can't cut your way to prosperity, you can't spend your way to prosperity. You, you've gotta do a combination of the two, so we can, I, I'm not gonna say that I'm a, a great person at spending to prosperity, but I'm pretty good at cutting money when I have to. I mean, it's, it's why I've lived my life and, um, there are some places that we've already trimmed quite a lot of money out of the budget. There's some of the stuff that we trimmed out this year as a response to the budget deficit we had last year. You'll need to add back an administrator next year to a building. I, I really recommend that we, that we look to restructure the student support position again for next year. I, I think that needs to be somebody who is in the district and not, and that's nothing against the ISD, but the problem with the ISD is those spaces change. And ours can too, I mean, but it, I think the more stability you get, it's under your own control, the better you're going to be. And I think a competency person probably best represents the competency from that standpoint. I think the ISD is a great resource. But I think having, if you have your own support person there, I think that doubles up that, that effort. So those are some things that need to be put back in. Like I said, there, it's, it's just a matter of tightening the, the belt up a little bit. I, I can't find any one thing and say, wow, we're wasting a ton of money here. That's, that's not the case. But I think next year, just some simple things that probably streamline, uh, you know, even if, and I'm not talking about student population. I mean, there's some things that could probably save two-hundred-twenty to three-hundred thousand dollars a year.
And then there's things we can even bring more money in, like grants.
Yeah.
Virtual academy.
If there's somebody here besides me that knows how to do that real well, because I don't, I hope it introduces.
You've got a new grant person. Can't they pretty much pay for their own salary?
Well, yes and no.
I mean, and the money they get you?
I, I think Nikki can speak to this, but I'm pretty sure next year our thirty-one A money, our at-risk money is projected to go down, correct? I mean, that's, some of those things, we're relying on the government. I think we need to do, we need to rely on ourselves. I mean, one of the things we just, was just talked about, I mean, one of the things that can save money, again, it's not a home run, but we can save twelve to fifteen thousand dollars a year just controlling color copiers by having key, you know, by having named cards to make, to make your own copies. Because all of us that work here have, have been here and looked in the recycle bin and there's like, oh, wow, the copies this thick in the recycle bin. If someone hit the wrong key and it ran a whole bunch of them instead of, it's just like, well, the way it goes. I mean, and even if it's black and white, at a couple cents per, per, uh, copy or half cent per copy and then the cost of the paper, it adds up over the course of the school year. And by having those swipe cards that say, you know, Greg Lewis, one of his, probably gave, just probably gave his card to some kid who just screwed the whole thing up and wasted five hundred twenty-five pieces of paper. I mean, there's some accountability there. I think they'll cut that back. Also the use of color copying. You don't really need that much color copying. There, my, I know Devin and Nikki and I had talked. Probably need a color copier in a building that sits in the office and it has a default. There's probably an access code or a PIN to use that. So we don't have people making a zillion copies.
You might even be able to get, um, to where they, somebody, like a, a certain person is in charge or certain, only certain people get down. Like an okay at five hundred.
Yeah, I mean, there's ways we can do it. But again, there's no way to, I mean, there's, there's just no big one item here that we can just come in and, you know, cut and say, wow, we just saved a ton of money. Now we're, we're hunky-dory. It's just a general tightening up. It's just another set of eyes. And when you might have a new superintendent, they walk in and say, why are you doing this? We didn't do it in the last district. We'll institute this policy and that will save more money. So. Unfortunately, the state of Michigan has not done a good job of funding schools the last twenty years. When you look at the increase, we're, I think we're fifty, about fifty states, which is worse is to be a little leaner and meaner. I mean, that's not a bad thing. However, when you're getting as lean and mean as you can, you still don't have money to pay people as well as you'd like. That's, that's an issue.
Well, even between Clinton and years, is the starting salary of a two, two grand difference or something?
More.
For a teacher?
And administrative pay and Adrian versus, Adrian's a district the same size. There's a huge gap in administrative pay between Adrian and here. I mean, there's.
Yeah, that's not.
Did you talk to you about Adrian's difference in starting pay for a principal?
For an elementary? Yeah, difference in starting pay for elementary principal here versus Adrian's eleven thousand dollar difference. So, you know, almost, you know, it's fifteen, eighteen percent difference, you know, starting salary. And yet we still, I, I would say this, the people that we, and I think the administrative group here would agree with it. Teachers we interviewed hired this year was, was, was a great prop. I mean, it really was. I mean, I'm very excited with some of the people that I got to meet that we hired. And so it's not always money, but it's that retention that's good. Because pre-market's hit public education. You got somebody who's really kicking in and you bring him in here and he, or she gets a lot of accolades and it goes to the paper or website or have you. We assume someone's, what are they paying you?
Yeah. Well, we should be paying competitively. That shows priority in my view.
Correct. So that was a focus of the summer. Right now, I'm figuring out why there's an assistant superintendent and a superintendent to do this job for when the school year's going, because every day I fall a little bit further behind. So the sooner we can get somebody in here that's a superintendent and then get somebody in to help them.
Then we, we have Stacy Bailey's position too, right?
Correct, yeah.
And that's Dawn Wood.
Yes, correct. Jacob's, um, been doing that. He's preparing right now for the NWEA. Very impressed with his skills and his ability to grab those, those type of jobs and run with them because I'd have them all followed up. So it's, it's good the easier. That's why I asked him, there's a couple reasons why I asked him. Like I said the last time, he thinks differently than I do and that's a good thing. I need someone to make me think, look at the other side of the coin. That's all I have. Anybody have any questions?
All right, um, set agenda. Approval of minutes from regular meeting, August twenty-sixth nineteen. And approval of monthly check register, August two thousand nineteen. And motion to approve, uh, consent agenda.
Support. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that brings us to Ms. M A S B workshop.
Well, hello.
Hello.
How are you? Good. So.
Long drive.
I have good company, so. Braces right by, no problem there. So you all received the communication from Greg and I last, in last week, Thursday. Were able to access information. We may, you may get any questions like that on that. So the first thing I'll say is, you know, you don't see this stuff every day. And I understand that you all hold a very high idea of what you're looking for here. But by our estimation, you really had an excellent campaign goal. I was, thank you. I guess I'll say pleasant surprise, but, but, you know, don't misinterpret that. Just seeing so many different pools across the state and all those different variables that go into it, I mean, really. Of course, we had said that we had been getting pretty calls all along, so I think there was a lot of. I think part of that is certainly a reflection on the compensation strategy that we had talked about early on. And some folks that talked with decided against it because I advised that everybody who was looking at it actually take some time in research to just sort of watch some of the videos and some of those conversations that we had to give them a clearer kind of understanding of where you were. And so I thought that that worked very well. So as far as our game plan for tonight, um, we really have kind of three big things that we need to do. We need to plan and detail the interviews, which are scheduled to occur next week. And so part of that is just preparing you for the interview process, getting real clarity on exactly what's going to transpire. I'd like for, um, us to be able to kind of like visualize what's going to happen so that you won't be surprised by anything that's going to occur. So we need to do that. Um, we also need to identify interview questions that we will be asking. And so Greg and I have brought some draft questions that we expect you to tear apart and put back together. Um, and then obviously we need to identify, uh, those folks who you'd like to invite to interview. So that is kind of what is in front of us yet this evening. I, I like to start with the preparation itself, just so that you'll be really thinking about, you know, what's coming. Let's first just kind of talk in general about the game plan. So what we have currently, uh, on the agenda is that we would be doing interviews Thursday and Friday next week. And originally we had thought that you were going to be able to begin interviews as early as five o'clock. I'm asking that now to make sure. Is that still true or is there a different start time?
I don't have the timeline.
Okay. Well, that's fantastic. So generally speaking, you're going to get a robust first round interview in around fifty minutes. So five oh, fifty minutes with each candidate. Now, believe it or not, answers to the questions usually only last somewhere between two and three minutes for each question. Sometimes people will go longer, but that's on average. So keeping that in mind, that means that you're only going to ask about seventeen questions. And that depends on the structure of the question. So we'll get back to that. But why I'm bringing that up now is to say, are you, do you feel like a fifty-minute interview with each of the candidates that you invite is going to suffice? As I said, that would be about seventeen questions and it would not allow time for the candidates to ask you questions. So if you're going to stick to fifty minutes, then I would say that their opportunity to ask you questions would happen in the second round. And the reason why I say that is understand that if I'm a candidate and at the end of the interview you say to me, well, Donna, did you have any questions for us? A single question coming from a candidate directed to the Board of Education could easily take twenty minutes. By the time that you all chime in, unless you're pre-ordering somebody to speak on your behalf of the Board President. So I'm asking that now only to say, if you want to allow them the opportunity to ask a single question, then what we would do is, you know, pad our time in the interviews. So we would plan for more like one hour interview, sixty minutes instead of fifty. And then we would, um, want you to determine who's going to answer the question on behalf of the Board as opposed to, you know, if time allows, you can take kind of a second comment, but otherwise it can spiral pretty quickly into further length beyond time. So what is, what is your general feeling, your general reaction just on timing, number of questions and the candidate's ability to ask the Board questions?
I feel like I want to spend as much time as I need to understand the candidate. I don't, I don't have to hear the number two for that. I think in our scenario, that it probably makes sense for them to be able to ask us more questions.
There's something to be learned in the questions that they ask.
That's true.
I think it's also going to expand on how many people we actually want to interview. As far as how much time we're going to have.
Yeah, so true. And I have a bound on Thursday. Not that I'm the most important person in the world, but I have a distributor, um, thing I can't, I can't miss in Detroit.
So what does that look like?
It's a, it's an open house. We're the distributors.
What's it?
My boss is kind of right for sure.
What time would you give that?
It doesn't end till seven.
Cause generally speaking for you, um, this, I mean, it, it is what it is.
Yeah, I know.
But it'll be difficult for you when it comes to deliberations because you will have, you know, kind of missed half of that. I'll say, I've said it before, I'll say again, the interviews will lose pretty fast back on this. But it still is going to be significant and top of mind. And so that will just, that'll be a little bit of a challenge for you for sure. Okay, so, so it sounds like we should be thinking more about sixty minutes. And we're, we're going to come back to that. I'm just tentative, like, I wanted to know. And it also sounds like it's important for candidates to be able to ask you, um, a question. Now, I appreciate, so that's good. I'm on board, you know, there's no debate about that. I will say though that it's not a fair call. And so our recommendation in first round interviews is that those interviews be absolutely consistent. And the reason why is that you need to be able to compare these candidates against each other. So if you spend an hour with me, but you only spent forty-five minutes with Greg, there's going to be a natural imbalance. And that imbalance is going to be in my favor if I did well, or really against me if I didn't go, you know, do well in that time. And so we want to be crisp when it comes to time and just in the spirit of, um, you know, equity, we need to treat all candidates the same. And so that means whether they're known to you or unknown to you, we're going to manage the process in a way where they're treated, you know, absolutely the same. That way you're able to evaluate how they're reacting to the environment, et cetera, and compare them to each other. Now, what that does mean though is that when we get to the point of working on interview questions, that means that there will be no follow-up questions in this round. And I fully appreciate how frustrating that can be sometimes because candidates don't always answer the questions fully. Or they may answer it in a way that creates confusion for you or, you know, you want to press for clarity. And so that's problematic. Um, but the understanding is that part of what you're evaluating these folks on is their ability to communicate. When they're talking with your stakeholders, they're not necessarily going to get another chance, right? And so they need to be mindful of that's a thing. You know, this should literally be the most important interview of their lives, right? At the point in time that they're interviewing, which it comes to all those schools. And so we would expect that they would be well-prepared for that. That said, as you are keeping track of responses, anybody whose answer was lacking or you wanted additional information, you would make a note of that. And if that's a candidate that comes back for next round, we certainly can do a deeper dive and get the, you know, the full clarity on that. For those of you who are concerned about thoroughness, that might seem less than satisfying, but I can assure you that it is a proven process. So look on it many times and get very good outcomes from it. Before we move on though, I want to check in with you on just kind of questions that you have, just general questions about the interview process itself.
So we're going to give them all an hour, but just in the, just the way people answer. I mean, one person may answer seventeen questions in forty minutes and the other person might only get through fifteen of the questions. How are we going to handle that part of it?
So that's a good question. I'd like to get clarity on that tonight. My recommendation to you is that you let us handle that. And what that looks like is we're pacing their questions and how they're answering. So if they look like they're running long and they're not going to get time to answer all the questions, what I generally do is hand a post-it note to the president that says, move to the last question. And that means no matter whose turn it is in questioning, it would go back to the president and the president would move to that final question. The reason for that is that final question does give some closure to the process. And so that's, that's smooth for you. It's smooth for the audience. It's also smooth for the candidates. I've had that happen in the past with candidates, they didn't even realize they missed some questions, you know? The key is that we have to be consistent. So know that we're tracking start times from the minute they start, not from the time that was scheduled. So if we have an interview scheduled at seven o'clock and due to other reasons we don't start till seven oh eight, that's when we're starting the clock from, because that's what we have to do. Sometimes audience members will start to look uncomfortable and look at you like, hey, you know, there's a time issue. But, you know, it's our charge to track that time and just hand that post-it note over to the president if it looks like there's going to be an issue. That generally looks really well. The problem in this case is we'll have to allow some additional time because if they don't get to ask a question, that might be problematic. So what that means is I would probably do that about five minutes earlier. What they're all going to get from us, whomever you invite to interview, you know, we're going to contact them and say, you know, that they have until tomorrow at noon to let us know if they're going to accept the interview, because when they do that, their name becomes public. As soon as they've all confirmed their time slots, we're going to send them all the exact same email that says, congratulations, here's the plan for the interviews, here's how many questions there will be, you need to manage your own time. I mean, so we don't give them the questions unless the Board directs us to, which is pretty unusual, but it does happen sometimes. And they know that they're going to have X amount of time for X amount of questions. And if they've done their homework, they should be able to anticipate about seventy-five percent of the questions. I mean, really knowing the district, knowing your selection criteria, they should have a pretty good handle on the kinds of questions they're going to get. So they should be very well prepared. They should be so well-prepared that people are wondering if they need questions. Because think about what you posted this position for, the level of excellence that you're expecting in this site's district. They, they really should be, um, pre-polished in this process. They should, they should know what they're expecting. How does that sound to all of you? We manage the time and we simply hand a note off to the Board President. Is that okay?
Just to clarify, the seventeen questions is kind of over. Aimed toward, those are going to be the same questions for every candidate?
They will be.
That, that does make sense if you want to compare one with the other.
But, but there is a couple of people that have different questions. Okay, figure that out.
So, so as, um, as rigid as the first round interviews are, understand that the second round interviews are not rigid. So those are going to feel much less formal. Yeah, absolutely. We'll be exploring, those folks who you decide to bring back will be thinking on their strengths, but also the potential challenges that they might have given their, kind of, the circumstances in preparation for the position. So those, those two rounds feel very different and the combination of the two. So I said, this is a process you really take in totality. If you take any one section of it, it could be a little frustrating. But the, but the completed process really is very effective.
I trust you. So when you look at the resumes, you know, there are some things that stand out.
Oh, for sure, and, you know, you, you look through hundreds and hundreds of sheets of paper. And so even how people package that information, right, has a significant influence. Those cover letters, the resumes, those letters of recommendation.
Yeah, just the way they organize everything, I thought, oh, that person's really...
It's interesting, isn't it? Yeah, that's a lot of information to weigh through, for sure. Okay, all right, just thinking through, imagine, we're going to cover a little more, but imagine that you're walking into interviews next week. What else are you worried about?
The fact that I'm going to miss it.
I hear you. What else? I mean, I want to reiterate to you that one of the most frustrating aspects of this process, right, we're handling Michigan's Open Meetings Act with the candidate's right to privacy, right? So remember when Brad came to talk to you, and he talked to you about rights to privacy? So all of the applicants have a right to privacy, it's part of our application process, they request that, and we are that. And so those folks who accept an interview, their names will become public, you know, sometime afternoon tomorrow. But keeping that in mind, that meant how much information you have, and in some cases, how much information we have about those candidates is also affected by that. So in other words, you know, and our memo will lay that out to you, but what we have done is a rigorous paper screen, based on the selection criteria that you developed. There are things that we know about candidates, and there are things that we don't know about candidates. So there's still a tremendous amount of discovery yet to happen. I tell you all that now just as a reminder, because once those names become public, it doesn't matter who you choose, everybody's so invested in what happens here in the company, that there's going to be a lot of information that comes out. You know, a lot of it correct and a lot of it incorrect, right? And so what's important for you all to remember, and also everybody who's listening and who's, you know, kind of catching wind of this tomorrow, is that there will be personal opinions about candidates, you know, this person was a jerk, or this person was wonderful, right? Those are subjective. When a factual issue or accusation is made about a candidate, we need to be made aware of it, so that we can do our due diligence and bring to the Board, whether it was, you know, factual, or we cannot find any basis for that. Whenever we can, we'll clear that information in a public meeting, so I'll make a statement about it. Because if you've heard it, they've heard it, and they're wondering as well. So whenever we can do that, we will do that. But if nobody notifies us of it, we can't do it. And I can promise you that you and they can't do the due diligence that we can do. So that's part of the contract with us that you have, so just a reminder on that. Okay. Also, just more for the audience's sake than yours, I'd say, is just remembering that. So we will do first-round interviews next week, and then in that intervening space, Board members will have assignments. So you'll need to set aside some time to make a couple of phone calls. We'll provide the information to you, we'll provide a script to you, but you will be grateful for the opportunity to learn more firsthand about the candidates that you're bringing back for second round. And so just kind of have that in your mind. And any additional discovery that we find that is necessary, we'll make sure that you are aware of that as well. We can share that in a public meeting, we will. We also have the ability to close session for some of that, that might be confidential, that has to be shared. It doesn't usually happen, I'm just going to say, usually we're able to handle all of this in a public meeting. All right. So let's, let's take a look at just kind of preparation in general. So Greg, if you will pull out those additional documents.
Donna?
Yes, sir.
Ford, I was wondering, maybe we could change the venue to the high school cafeteria? This seems like it would be a more comfortable setting for the audience.
Is there any conflict schedule?
Can you make it?
Does it easy drop the grout?
I would anticipate, if you have this many people attending your regular Board meetings, then I would anticipate probably a couple of those for the interviews. And I recommend that the Board, from a sort of logistical perspective, that the Board be set up kind of all in one line at an angle, and the candidate be set on the other side at an angle. So it's kind of like a lopsided herringbone. And the reason for that is that it works best if the audience can see all of your faces and the candidate's face, and you can see each other's. So that works best. If the candidate, like right now, with my back to the audience, you know, it's me, so they don't really care. But if I were a candidate, they would want to see my body language, they would want to see my expressions. And so if we're in a space that's large enough to accommodate that, that will, that will be much better for everybody's experience, I would say. Great, so we'll just need to make sure that we get that right when we communicate with people.
And those are Thursday, Friday next week?
Thursday and Friday.
Home football game. Is it March?
Over way.
It's next week. Okay, 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 we're good. There won't be anything, parking won't be an issue.
Oh, okay. All right, that's great, so thank you for bringing that up. This is fancy. So just, just kind of a reminder here, what the interview's about, it's really just intended to give us more information about the candidate, also get a sense of how they communicate, how they conduct themselves, how they hold the room. Keeping in mind that, you know, charisma is not a good superintendent make, right? So you're looking for more in this package than just charisma. And, you know, I, I have this kind of footnote at the bottom to say, I know some fantastic superintendents who are not the best in interviews. And so that's something they use to their side, and it's not for us to decide, but you'll see probably a fair mix in the group that you interview. Sometimes it just, that's the other thing, is they're just so nervous, they want it so bad, that somebody will have an off-night. So, I mean, that's not going to happen, so it is part of what you have to take into consideration. So, you know, the, the two things I usually, you know, you've heard me talk about before, but I'll remind you, they use predictors of success, right? Past performance in similar circumstances, right? So similar challenges. And then depending on which expert you're talking to, the other one is just cognitive function. So memory, ability to think and solve problems. So those are the kinds of things that we want to drive to. In their resume, they laid out a lot about, you know, what they've done, those kinds of accomplishments. Part of this process is fact-checking that. So when Greg and I work with you on questions, most of the questions that we're going to encourage you to ask are doing behavior or experience-based questions. And that allows us to hear what they've actually done in circumstances, and then also fact-check that information for accuracy. So that's part of just the continuum of the process. I already mentioned that you would be doing some reference checking, and of course, the reference and background checking that we do is deeper and more thorough. But we want to bring you into the candidates' backgrounds and personalities, that's why we do that. Then we'll talk about, you know, I'm like a broken record, so one of the things that you'll hear me say many times is, they don't want you to make a decision until you're ready to make a decision. If you're not ready to make a decision, then I'm going to say, what additional information do you need to feel good about making a decision? Because it's our job to design those opportunities to get that information. So whether that's another round of interviews, psych visits, whatever it is, based on what you're telling us, we're going to give you some recommendations for that. And that's why in the timeline itself, we give you a lot more than one opportunity for you to make a decision. We want your public to know that you could make a decision as early as after the second round of interviews, but it might go on, you know, longer than that. And Greg's like, just get this done. It's on record. Try not to draw it off. No, you still look great, really. Funny. So we will, what, what, we're going to establish the interview questions with you tonight, but we will prepare for you a guide that really has its scripted from beginning to end. And so you will follow that guide for every single interview. Because we'll bring copies of the guide when we come, and there'll be copies for each candidate that you're going to interview. And that way, when you're comparing, you're going back to your notes, that's what your notes are in. So just as a reminder, anything that's used to make a decision is subject to the Freedom of Information Act. So when you're taking notes on candidates, don't do so blindly, you know, sometimes people doodle, because that can be misinterpreted if it was voided. So you want to be very intentional with your note-taking during interviews, because those notes are subject to voiding. And so you're, because we're going to develop the questions tonight, and I'm going to send you back a PDF of the interview guide ahead of time, so you can get acquainted with it. You'll know what questions you're going to ask, you know, you'll feel more comfortable that way. Also, the expectation is you're going to be thinking ahead of time though, about what you're going to be listening for in the answers. And so that will become much more real as we start going over questions. But that's the ideal, is that you have some markers that you're listening for, and you're able to assess the extent to which the candidates hit those markers. For every question, there'll be an area where you can take notes, and also a scoring gain that you can utilize as well. We're not going to add those up and calculate them, that's not the purpose, which you certainly can, as you're comparing candidates. Because that may help you, you know, sometimes by the time you get to the sixth one, you're like, wait a minute, was it the first person or the second person that said that? I need to go back to my notes and just make sure I haven't got my candidates kind of crossed in the process. So you can also, you know, practice your own questions. It is completely normal for you to be nervous when you come in next week and start those interviews, honestly. Every Board member I've ever worked with is like, I don't think this is going to be so nerve-wracking. There's a lot of energy, you know, when we start the process, and you really feel like you're being interviewed as well. And so being able to just look through the PDF of that interview guide, and we'll assign you questions ahead of time, so you'll know which ones you're asking, that will go a long way. And we'll just not assign questions to you Thursday night, but we will assign questions to you Friday night. So then just keep in mind that there's, there's background going on in the room, and then there's also the culture and mannerisms that the candidates bring to the interview process. Sometimes out of nerves, there's additional mannerisms or tics that, you know, kind of play. And so I'm going to recommend to you that you just try to be very consistent in how you respond to each candidate. So sometimes people will tell you, like, don't smile, and, you know, look intense, or, I, I just want you to be yourself consistently. So if you're a person that normally looks pretty friendly, continue to look friendly. If you're a person that looks more serious, I'm not going to punch anybody in the face, then just continue to do that, right? I would prefer that you had an open eye, or do this, or get out of your mind, sometimes you're like, really wise person.
We can't get this done?
Let's go with polite, let's go with polite mannerisms, and hopefully we don't have any that we want around either, right? If a candidate has a nervous tic or a mannerism that you find distracting, you can write that on your, on your guide. Just say, "Candidate keeps saying um," or "Candidate keeps clearing his throat," or "Candidate drinking water funny." The reason why I advise you to do that is you need to get it out of your mind, so you can actually focus on what they're bringing to the table. Because that could be, and we all think, you know, I don't agree that does that, but everybody has their moments, and you want to be able to focus on the substance of their candidacy, not those, those distractions. So in this case, you will not be doing any redirecting. In the second round interview, you will be able to press for clarity, or say, "Tell us more about that." And so just understand the difference between first round and second round interviews. The one thing I will warn you about is sometimes candidates get nervous, so they will say, "Did I answer your question?" And you may be tempted to answer, but the answer to that question is, yes, thank you. Whether or not that satisfied you is not the issue, it's just being polite moving on to the next one. Sort of nervous habit people have. This is just again telling you that I just want you to do consistently whatever it is that you're going to do, you're going to see consistency from us. There's probably more pressure on the Board President for that than anybody else. And that has to do with just how you begin the interviews and how you end the interviews. Again, that'll be scripted, but part of this will be also, especially because the candidate's going to be able to ask questions. So we'll want you to think about, are you going to be answering your question? Or will you be answering it, and if time allows, allowing another Board member to chime in? Like, how, how do you, how do you see yourself handling that?
I think the other Board will be chiming in as well.
Or maybe say they agree.
So we'll just be according to time? I'm sorry?
It's impossible.
So everybody's okay?
So we, so all we want to do is just be mindful of that, we're working your questions, so that we allow that, that's...
Well, we'll be respectful of that, of course.
Okay, perfect. And so just no overly salus kind of feedback to candidates, right? We want to keep it, we need polite, you know, we need friendly, but not, you know, too much, too extreme in any one direction or the other. So here's, here's the difficult part, right? You have looked through the applicant materials, so you've already started to form some opinions, right? And that's how they go, and I have some opinions, I'm sure I have some opinions. And yet, we have to be conscious of that, and try to keep an open mind as long as possible in this process. And imagine in this case you were giving advice to your child or a best friend, right? The advice that you would give would be to keep as many options open for as long as possible. No decisions are going to be made until you make them, right? And so that has to do with keeping an open mind and really listening to whom we interview. And even when we think about how many folks we're going to interview, you know, I'm going to recommend that you take more than less, because you have plenty of time to say no, right? It's very hard to pull somebody back into the process if you've set them aside early. And so that means even if you want to interview more than six, we will figure that out. I'm much more concerned about you feeling like you've done your due diligence, and left every stone, you know, turned, versus skipping over some, going thinking, gosh, I wonder if we, if we made a mistake early on in the process. There will be times during the interviews that it just seems uncomfortable and silent. For example, you, you may ask a candidate a question, and the candidate takes what feels to you like a long time to formulate their answer. That's okay. Just let that silence hang. I have, I have sat in a room long enough where I thought, oh my goodness, this is not good. And then the candidate had a fantastic, well-thought-out answer, and that pregnant silence was long since forgotten, because they were so uncomplimented with their answer. And so just let that silence hang, if that's not a problem, and you don't need to fill it, right? In order to be polite, that's, that's not necessary. Likewise, for you, as you're asking those questions, you don't need to rush from one Board member to another in asking the questions. So if you just asked a question, and it's coming back around to the President again, you would look around to see if your colleagues had pretty much finished their note-taking before you began, you know, and asked the next question. Now, you don't have to, you know, belabor that, but just generally, you want to see if they're writing down on their notes, so that they can shift their attention to the candidate answering the next question. So, yeah, you don't have to rush to that. Better that you are fully present in hearing those answers, and the candidates are fully, because they're going to look to you. Eye contact is really important to them. And so better that they, that you get fifteen questions answered well and heard well, than, you know, eighteen chop, 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 right? That are not as well answered or as well listened to. Okay? Some of this is pretty good, kind of good. I've already suggested that you should take good notes, even if you're not a note-taker. So I will say I'm not a big note-taker, but when it comes to interviewing, I really do. And that has to do with what I've already mentioned to you, which is, it can, you get interview fatigue. So it's very, very normal to be like, oh, I'm trying to remember who gave us this answer when it came to student activities or curriculum evaluation or something. And so good notes will help you discern that, for sure.
Oh, yeah, because the video is true.
So that, so we'll be videoing this, these interviews?
I don't know.
Because that will be something that we have to involve, and maybe go to that.
I mean, we tape all our meetings, so I...
But you're not going to be here, so you're going to have to take out the mask.
Oh.
Well, the reader will see the audience to be videoing this as well.
Well, I, I mean, I think because...
That's typical.
Right, well, it's a whole new age when it comes to technology.
Are you saying that people don't normally?
Well, here's the problem, you know, just candidly. So I understand what normally happens, but if the first-round interviews are telecast, so livestreamed in some way, then that means anybody who's interviewing the second night will know the questions.
Oh, yeah.
And so I, I generally ask the Board and the public, and say, hey, you know, if you want this to be a thorough and well-thought-out process, then everybody needs to mind their p's and q's. If there's some question about the ability to do that, and, you know, in a, in a search not far from here... and you know, in a search not far from here, I actually, there was a reporter from Unlive that was live tweeting the questions during the interviews. So if there's any chance that that is going to happen, we should make the interview questions available to the candidates before the interview. All of them at the same time. That way they all have the same amount of time to prepare. So we have to resolve what the plan is for. Some districts will video, will record them and not run them till later. But that depends on the public environment.
Well, we can choose nature important. We can't stop anybody in the audience from recording.
We would just hope that they would respect the process, I guess, if they're still.
I know there's a lag time for that upload.
Well, we manage for live stream.
I've been through a candidate's interview, but we didn't give the questions. They didn't work out fine. We didn't really question the other time.
It does work out fine. I mean, sometimes I'll have educators that say to me, did you leave those interview questions ahead of time? And I'll say, yeah, for certain reasons, you know, we made the decision to do that. All the candidates have the questions at the same time. My only concern is the consistency, right? And that's what I'm looking for.
It tells you something too, and you have time to prepare for the question. And you can take some thoughts from that, too.
Honestly, I'd rather they didn't have the questions.
What do most schools do?
If they're going to put it out there, it's unfair to the second group or our first group.
Most do not, but you have to understand that the public environment and the media environment is very different from one district to another. And so that's just, I mean, that's a huge difference. And so you, but we do have to have a handle on it, you know, to know what the plan is going to be. So it sounds like there's some interest in ensuring that the candidates don't have the questions ahead of time. I think the question is, do you feel like you can have some certainty of that? Or is there going to be a distortion in, you know, your confidence of that?
The video that's consistently available on YouTube takes time to upload. I wouldn't go over there about that one, but yeah, I can't guarantee that some reason on the live stream or tweet out into our questions, I guess, in the media, which we have no control of, unfortunately. Yes, Bill?
I'm happy to not post anything.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Bill. But again, that's the YouTube one that I know takes a little while to upload the comments.
Someone else could walk in with their.
Right.
Well, has the media environment changed? Because, I mean, like I said, that was.
We might not have that issue.
I can live stream in the cafeteria because the cell service there is awful.
Yeah, but I don't think it's very much. I know it's.
Shut the wifi now.
I think we can.
Can we shut the wifi now?
Absolutely. Well, then why don't we do?
If they do, they do.
I know a guy. We don't.
Yeah, I think if we took the step of shutting the wifi now, I don't think that is probably the only guarantee that we can give.
I don't think anybody's going to livestream it.
I don't think there's been a lot of live streaming going on recently.
No.
I feel like we're probably going to be positioned to say we're still.
And I think they're going to ask.
Right.
At that point, it's too late, but.
I don't think.
Well, people sort of often say, you know, please don't livestream it because it's not fair. There's nothing for the boards that understand if.
Yeah, it's just about the fair, yeah, for the whole interview, so.
And I think everybody's reasonable for that.
I think that's important, yeah.
So no questions other than, yeah, I agree.
And so, but there may be videos happening. It just will be released later, just so we're clear and.
It sounds like Mr. Swift is willing to hold off on that. Well, thank you for already letting us.
Yeah, because I personally would like to watch a video of the interviews that I have missed.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good point for you. That would be possible. You can potentially catch up, you know, what your kind of daytime agenda is for next day. Okay, so we've already talked about first round, creating those very similar environments so that we fair candidates. And then that second round being very, very different. We will talk more about second round after the first round is done. So based on what you, based on what we just talked about, the first interview will start at 5:00 PM. And we're going to allow 60 minutes. And then you tell me, do, just based on what you normally do, what would make most sense, a 10 minute break or a 15 minute break in between? Now, keep in mind, you need some time in between because sometimes you don't start because of logistics and stuff until 5:05. So it may not even be you. It can just be the circumstances that are kind of creating a shift in time. But in the least, you need to get up, you need to stretch your legs, you may need to use the facilities, you may need to go drink water. All that is important to keep your brains sharp to listen to the interviews. So 10 or 15 minutes in between, you tell me. I could do this. I know. We will be very fast. So that means that the second interview will be 6:10 PM. I will add that 7:10 PM, I know you're not going to like this at all. But after the second one, I'm going to advise you to take a 20 minute break and have something to eat. So that means you will need to have something here for board members. You would need to have more stuff on hand anyway because you'll have to have bottles of water for everybody, bottles of water for the candidates, that kind of thing. And so I don't know if you want, if you normally during a longer session, you have sandwiches delivered or whatever you do, but I want you to go into another room away from the public. I want you to eat. You are not to discuss candidates. One of us will be in there, you know, be very friendly, make sure you're not telling them to discuss candidates when you're in that room. But that's so your public trusts, right? That the right things are happening, but also I need you to be as fresh as possible. And so that's what the purpose of that break is. So that means that we will start the third interview at 7:30 PM and then it will wrap up at 8:30. Now, if we're, if we end up going to more than six, you know, we'll be adding on. But in the very least, that means on the second night, what would happen is that deliberation will not occur until, let me back up. On the first night, after every candidate's interview, we'll hand out feedback forms. Your audience will complete those feedback forms. We will collect them. Before you go home for the night, we will photocopy. I know after the copy conversation, I just heard. This is another really hot topic.
In what?
I know, yeah. We don't need color on those, that's for sure. So those forms will get copied and collated for each board member and you'll go home with a packet with the understanding that you're going to review it that day. The second day though, what happens is when we finish that third interview, there's going to be a little bit of a break. You're going to stretch your legs while we're getting that, those copied. Don't be surprised if it takes 15 or 20 minutes to copy them. That's very normal and that's just how it goes. Then you're going to come back to the table and you're going to read those while you're sitting at the table. Now, that might seem annoying, but I'm telling you, that's how it works and it does work. And it works for everybody involved. The audience knows that you're taking their feedbacks so they're safe because they see you looking at it. You're going to want to know what they're thinking at that point in time, right? That's all part of the fullness of the information that you have. So after you've done that, then we'll deliberate to determine who you'd like to bring back for second round interviews. So I say all that to you to say, you, the second night, you're probably not going to get out of here until 9:30 or 9:45 and that's if everything flips along pretty nicely. So it's marathon, not sprint. Everybody's good with that, understanding with that? Okay, fantastic. If we have, if we're going to add a seventh person, we'll add it to the first night since that second night tends to go long anyway, so just so you know that. Okay. And now just another reminder that, so even after you decide who you're interviewing, we're still never confirming or denying who replied and who didn't reply, right? It just becomes about the six or seven or four or five that you interview, not about those people that you didn't. So that's just. Okay, I feel like we are very ready now to work on the next step, which is interview questions. And we're going to revisit our times after we nail down the questions in case there's any debate on the number of questions. So while Greg is passing those out to you, let me explain to the audience that you don't get to see the interview questions tonight for obvious reasons. The expectation of the Open Meetings Act is met during the interview when the questions are read aloud. So for the board members, they, you've not seen these interview questions. We do not send them to you ahead of time. The reason why we don't send them ahead of time is I like to see you read through them, digest them and work through them together. So we are not handing you a finished product. We just hated you a very rough draft. You're going to read through them in totality and then we'll talk through what we need to add, delete or revise. Okay, and I'll tell you how we're going to do that once you're done with the group. Now, once we get the scout of the interviews, we're going to do interviews. We'll provide instructions to. I'm posting the location. You sure can. Yep. Yeah, once we did that, people want to know. And so we'll put the time.
It's not just for you.
So the best way to go after this is to start with what's missing. And let me explain why, because whatever's missing has to be added. We want to create space for it and then determine kind of what we need to delete. So I'm going to, in a second, I'm going to open up the floor to you and ask you what's missing. And what you will do is just say a general topic. Like, I think we're missing a question on film and lighting. And then if we need to get clarity, we'll ask you. Beyond that, we generally can draft a question that's going to hit the mark with the subject that you're looking for. For the rest of the questions, you'll notice that your handout has question numbers and then it also has line numbers. That's so that if you are just looking to revise it, you can say, well, not on question two, line five, I really think it should say this instead of that, right? Like you don't have to read the whole question. You can be very specific in helping me navigate to what you're saying without having to read the whole question. Listen, I'm not alarmed if the audience gets a general sense of what you're asking because that's just the nature of the beast. And so we're just going to do the best that we can on this and it usually works out just fine. So I don't want you to worry about that. So let me, let me check in right now on just those topics. Does anybody feel like there's a topic that's missing that needs to be addressed in the question?
I think one, distance and moving. Maybe that would be a, I think that's some, I mean, based on what I saw, there's people who are, you know, would have to travel, so.
Well, remember we talked about this. So we can't compel residency. That's not legal. We could have said that the board expects the individual to move 20 miles of the perimeter of the district, but the board did not make that decision and we talked about it. So what we would be asking is a general question about how the individuals would invest, you know, invest into Kelsey.
Or have you already discussed, I mean, have these candidates, have you had that discussion with these candidates that they would honor that part of the?
I have with nearly all of them, but not all of them. In other words, there's some folks that I would be shocked if you're going to interview them.
Right.
And so I haven't had that conversation with them.
Right.
But the ones that are likely in play if there's a.
So it's not an issue?
Right, that's our job to address it, exactly.
Do that, you get on, one thing I was wondering, I was asking them about their community investment, their involvement in the communities they've been in, how they invest themselves.
So. So I'm going to ask you if that rather pointed question can replace question 12, because they're getting to the same thing.
Yep.
So are you okay with my deleting question 12, but we had drafted it instead doing something more specific to what Kelsey's invested?
What was, what were you asking?
How they're involved. How are they going to invest themselves in it? I read question 12 to be more of a question that references their investment in the district with the employees and staff.
So for you, they feel different? Then let's just leave them as separate and we'll see how we end up as far as numbers go. Who's going to make this up?
What about number 17? Close in match to what you're thinking?
Yeah, I think a broader, multi-passive form.
Want to hone that down a little more?
What, 17?
Maybe on question 17, line 37, replace that word trust with investment or similar words.
So I'm going to highlight that and then we'll come back later in time.
Or maybe they said, what have you done in the past? What would you do if you were here to, to come? I mean, I'd like to look at your past, but also what would you do here? To, to come, I mean, I'd like to look at the different past, but also what they would do here. And then... Is that enough?
No, that's okay.
Two-part.
Well, it's a two-part. I told them, I already had it in the past. But we're, I'm gonna see how it all shakes out. What other new, so I know that that's not fully fleshed out yet, but what other topic is missing?
On question six, line 14, I would like to know their view on who drives that.
Their view on what?
Who drives it?
The question is implying that they do.
And I think we wanna know their vision on that. Because I think, I know my vision on it is different. I assume that many of my common parts up here's vision on that is different. So I think we wanna have a, I personally wanna have a clear view when we walk out of these interviews of who drives that, and if they're okay with not driving that. Are you maybe asking what drives their decision-making in their view of it? No, I wanna know who drives it.
Okay, let's just add that question on to the end of that.
Because I think if they are, if they're very adamant about driving that, it won't work.
Well, I think the difference here is about the verb. They should drive it, but it doesn't mean they set the direction. I mean, as the instructional leader, they need to drive it. It, but it's about who set, who determined where we were going to begin with, that's in question. So it's like, I say tomatoes, you say tomatoes, but if, if we don't get that worded right, it might confuse them in the question. So...
I guess I wanna make sure they're okay.
We're still talking about question number six, right?
Yeah. I just wanna make sure they're okay with getting very strong input from others.
Yeah, I understand.
Not necessarily us.
No, not us.
No, I thought it was you.
No, not us.
Okay. I, I think that I have resolved that in my notes, so I'm feeling comfortable about that question. Part of it was just reordering it and asking who drives it in the beginning, and then following up with the second part of the question, it was a little different.
But you have another question?
I do, I do. What else is missing?
Uh, question eight, line 18. And we may hit on this more, but I wanna know, I wanna understand, I would, I would like, like a real-life example of how they've dealt with that, and, and create, and I think I did some, there was another question that I was...
There was another one somewhere.
I think it was 16.
16.
Those are...
There was another one that was even...
Yeah. I think we can just retool that question to make it more behavior-based, and that will... So share an experience that reflects your views about.
How you... How you alleviated that problem.
Or boosted it. I think that, that first word in bold right here is what it's worth here. Okay. I think I've got that one over there.
Because that's a kind of a big difference to us.
Yeah. Kind of maybe, yeah. Eight, question eight, line 18. Just take a minute and think strictly in terms of topics. I mean, I know you've given a lot of thought to what you're gonna be listening for or wanna know about. So before we start to, you know, do editing and adjustment of current questions, I just wanna make sure we hit the topics that...
I think more than what you, transparency case, you know, give us an example of how we gotta transparent with your community. And I, you know, it's like...
Yeah, I can jump.
This is, this is public funds here. We did have a meeting of negotiations. Are you gonna tie that?
Go ahead.
Oh, I was gonna ask Tim, so 15, would you replace 15? Line 15 to 16 there? Yeah, or is that... Yeah, I...
Yeah, that's pretty much what he was saying.
Or do you want to just replace that question with a question?
I think we don't wanna replace it, it's called a problem.
Any others with specific topics?
When you envision the first test, will it be like...
No.
No. I would...
We'll save that for the second round.
I would like to know their perception of us from, from the outside in.
Do you think they're gonna tell you the truth?
Yeah, no.
I don't know, but I'd like to.
Not if they want the job.
Whatever question they ask.
I mean...
If they're candid with it, I'd take candidity more than, you know, say, "Why?"
I believe you would, but I just, I think it's, you know, it would be very difficult to tell how candid they were being with you. I'm just, I, I hear you on that, and I think that is an interesting dialogue in the second round. I wouldn't try it for the first round. I just wouldn't, I wouldn't think anything they'd share would necessarily water in that area. We've heard so many things when people called us. We were talking on the way here. Often they would call us, ask a question, and then they'd start talking. Well, let us know when you're done talking.
A lot of us were looking for, we didn't give them a second round.
Right.
Are we supposed to be getting rid of some of these?
Well, we will. First, I was just surveying to see if there was any kind of additional areas that were, what we're missing.
Question one. I think I want to know more of why.
I almost wrote that one.
Why, you know, the word "why" for it.
So...
What are you saying?
The "why" is there, but you're asking the "why" about, yeah. Yes, but alright, alright. Okay, I'll let me think about that. I'm also...
This is more of a "what," and I want a "why." Does that make sense?
No, no, it doesn't. I'm just trying to, it doesn't mean...
Can I take around the long switch?
One is "why you," the other one's "why us."
Right.
If that helps, kinda. But the, but the, I don't, I... So I generally don't like to start an interview in any way that seems adversarial, right?
Well, it doesn't have to be the first question, it can be the last question.
That's exactly what I was wanting.
Well, anybody that's gonna answer that question pretty much knows that they've done their research, and they're probably gonna answer accordingly, don't you think?
I would like to know why.
Even if they don't, well, it might be telling too.
I mean, most of them, I felt like, they had a very specific statement about that, did a nice drive in their cover letters. I mean, you had some of the, the most authentic cover letters I've seen in a long time. I was pleasantly surprised. A lot of times we're not working with you. Sorry, I'm jaded. But I was surprised at, at how candid some folks were in here about it. I thought that was good. So we'll, we'll, we'll shift that to an ending one that transitions into just before we ask today a question. So that other question... So in the beginning, we had asked if we could replace the first question you suggested. Was, if we could just replace it with 12. I mean, we're kind of hanging out on that. We did not resolve that, because I wanted to see how many, um, kind of potential questions that there were. And right now, because I have to count the opening and I have to count the closing for our 23, so that's too many, which means we need to pare down three. And so that's why I'm suggesting that we do replace question 12 with the investment question. I think that's Kevin's suggestion. Like, he didn't suggest we replace it, but it was Kevin's suggested question.
Is there someone, is there somewhere else in here that asked that question 12, but their responsiveness? I think that that's probably what we're looking for more.
Accessible?
Well, but it's, you could be...
They're there, but if they don't respond...
You could be accessible, but you could not respond.
Or not follow up.
Not follow up.
Well, let me, let me step back for a second and just say, are there any of these questions that you don't care what about? That you're just like, "Hey, this isn't a priority for me, can we just delete it?"
You have three, four...
Let's do that, I'm all about it.
Four, 14, and 18.
Okay, so I'm gonna talk you through my thinking on some of it, so that you know.
I got those nine more.
Okay, okay, that's good though. So question four is, um, so they're on record, and the public can hear it. So I'm gonna admit that I specifically wrote that, because it's been an issue, and that way they're stating it publicly, um, as far as preparedness. So it doesn't mean we don't get rid of it, but that was my thinking and why I put it in there. Four, and the next one was 14?
14, yeah.
Okay, so if we strike that one, we have to have a different one on that topic. Well, like you told me...
About 11.
That's great. No, maybe that one doesn't convey what you're looking for. Like, it could be that that's too soft, or it could be that that's not. Maybe you wanna know how they would take a creative approach to it. How would they drive growth? How would they, I mean, there's lots of stuff in that subject.
Yeah, I think 11 is a lot more important than 14. And 11 was the one that I was looking for when I was asking you about that question.
Oh, maybe they did, because I inserted, you're right.
Yeah.
So you're, I'm sorry, you guys, I have inserted questions, so I'm adding chaos, I'm sorry. So this is really, okay.
So, shoot that, we're getting rid of 14?
Alright, that's fine.
Alright, let me get there. So is everybody okay with getting rid of your 14?
Yes.
Yep.
John's on 18.
We got rid of 12, too, right?
No, not yet, that's still in play.
I already crossed it off.
Well, I'll cross it off.
I know.
Yeah, 18.
You're good with 18 going?
Yeah.
I'm good with 19 up here.
We'll get an idea of 18 in the interview.
Right.
Wait, say that again.
We'll get some idea of 18, and then we can, how it's run in the interview.
Yeah, we'll give it a scratch of 18.
Okay.
I hope they have a scratch of 19 up here.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, I would, yeah.
Do you want to just strike 19? Okay. I'm just reading through the last one to make sure there's... So turn to your, um, you have the opening. Do, do we have a separate selection criteria in this? Let's just read this out, so we can take a look at the selection criteria and make sure that we've not left something off that we're gonna...
Um, I got a question. Um, question number 10, uh, line 22, can we elaborate on that? Um, like, more specifically, uh... How you drove, um...
I think that'd be something that we could hit on more in the second interview.
Yeah, maybe.
I, I think that's probably...
I guess we're on bonuses.
Driving outcomes, right.
Yes.
Yeah.
Like, higher grades, or...
Yep, there's a, there's a question here that relates to that. So the two together should hit that for you. Yeah.
10 and...
Question seven?
Yes.
So combine, and now it's, you are gonna do deeper.
Right, right, right.
So you don't want to drop 19, is that okay?
I thought we did.
No, we did. Oh, I, I was...
So what are the ones we've dropped so far?
Huh, hold on.
I'm sure. I'm so confused.
I am. But I, a lot of times, I think this is...
I always do it on the computer.
Um, and this is why.
18, 19, and 14, that's what I have.
18, 19, 14, 15.
So things that have come up that are not reflected in here. Negotiations, which didn't make the selection criteria. And so my question is, do you wanna use a first-round question for that, and I reserve it to a second round?
Second.
So we're doing the second, responsiveness, which is, you know, maybe implied in some of these, but not explicit. So you need to tell me if we need to, you know...
Your report is down, huh?
Mm-hmm.
I think that would fall into...
Should we pair that into 12?
I think that's a real limit, I'm talking about, is just responsiveness.
You, you, you know, you could, um, let me find the one. You could roll it into five. How did you respond to your critics on that? Sounds like anything, but...
I, I guess what I'm looking at is you can be, you can be visible 24/7, but if you don't respond, it doesn't, you might as well not even be there.
Right, or if you just tell everybody yes.
Yes.
I mean, that's the other thing we find in super intimacy a lot, it's like, "Yeah, sure." And then you can ask something, have a break. Is there, is there another question that you feel like? So right now, we have both the investment and the visible and accessible questions, so those are two. If we give up one of those, we could roll one in that is specific to, you know, responsive, responsiveness.
16.
I think that's important.
Yeah, that's a theory.
Yeah.
I thought, I'm sorry, I thought you said you wanted to cut that one.
No, 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 I wanted to add responsiveness to that.
Okay.
I'll probably...
Okay, I see.
Okay, I was confused too. Because that's about more, that's about more than that particular group, right?
It is, but it's...
But you'll take it?
This is, this one is more important, I would say, than others.
Okay. How does the group feel about adding to that?
Or should we run it with 15? You could go into both of them. They could go into 15 and 16.
Yeah, I can see it in both. I guess I'm, from the perspective that I've been in, I'm more concerned about 15, but it would be good to have it for 16 as well.
It would have eliminated a lot of problems if it wasn't 16 as well.
Sure.
All right, well, let's do it. Let's, let's do it in, in 15. Let's add it to that, okay?
We can kind of tip that home. Yeah.
Is there anything in here that?
Well, and that's a great one for background and recognition.
Yeah.
Is there? Do you guys see anything in here that would help us gauge whether they're proactive or reactive?
How they answer the, how they answer.
Yeah, maybe you may as much.
Well, just specifically.
I mean, the same thing.
Right.
Right. When you're circumcised, if you're stretched, that won't make a lot of sense.
I'd just like to have maybe a targeted question to.
Well, and that might be something that we use for, for backgrounds and other things as to how they feel.
Yeah, we'll get some more accurate information there and then you will.
Maybe they're not, so they're making who they are.
Let's just say they're new themselves. They defer from, you know, others.
Real.
Wow.
How many do we have now?
We already have 20.
20, so we need 17, yes?
No.
No? Okay.
Well, because we've.
What about four?
Hold on. Because I've included in that number the beginning, the closing, and the question.
Right.
So that's how we have, basically, from 17 to 20. So I, so you're, you're in good place right now. But we happy to talk about four.
She said that she wanted four so everybody could hear it, but.
Oh, I see, because I was going to say we've read all that, that everybody else has read. Okay, I got it. I love that.
I know, I like it, guys. Well, we did that.
Yeah.
Can you maybe just, like, throw a replay in there? Give us a basic understanding of that.
For four, you want to read?
Yeah. That's fine. I mean, it's, it's, I mean, can we word it in a way that's like, do you have all the things that you need? Versus what have you done?
Well, I have, okay, I have a different.
Just to slim that question down.
All right.
Summarize, that's a good word to stick in there somewhere.
I think people in here, the full, it's the full.
All right, okay.
That's true. We're, we already know that, that's where all the people.
Right.
That's a good point.
I can, um, in our guidance to candidates, I can advise them to address that in their opening statement. Which would be part of question one. So that, which, because those two actually threaten great overlap. Right? Depending on, you can imagine how different candidates are going to answer that question differently. And so I can do that, and I would advise that we not replace it with another question. Because that'll give us a little breathing room around not answering any of the questions.
So you're rolling four into one then, so when they're hoping for production, they can.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to do it that way.
Don't do it, he's the president. He's a guy wisely, so obviously.
And I.
I don't want to read detail or read whatever you have to do.
Right. So I always advise them that they have to be prepared to have an opening statement and closing statement. So that's standard guidance. If, and I'd like the audience to hear that too, because sometimes they think, why is that person so prepared when they start? Um, if you have any question about that, we're happy to give you a copy of the email that was sent to candidates. Like, we want you to understand, like, it's very, we're very consistent in the guidance that we give them. Okay. So I think we're stuck with this then. Is that right?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so as we're transitioning, I'm going to ask you, you might, you know, depending on how you came, you know, we, in our memo to you last week, we asked you to come to pair, um, having reviewed all the materials, with the candidates, the, the top six that you'd like to learn more about. So a couple of reminders and also some context for the folks who are listening. So we will not be mentioning any candidate names during our conversation today. We will not be mentioning any district names during our conversation today. If you are trying to convey when talking to your fellow board members, that someone would really understand Tecumseh, you could say something like, but they're in a district that's similar to Tecumseh, or I really feel like they would understand Tecumseh. So in other words, you might just have to think a minute longer about your, you know, framing your comment. So that, you know, you're not actually mentioning the name of the district or something like that. Um, so we will refer to them only by candidate number, um, which was on the cover sheet, uh, the information that we gave you. Before we get rolling on this, I need you to just touch base with yourself and make sure that you have the candidate numbers of your top six. Um, what I will do is pull each of you and get your top six, just those numbers, and we'll take a look at where the interest lies and then determine who to interview just based off of interest. Chances are, we'll have to have some discussion once we get to those ones that maybe don't have the same strength of interest as others do. And we'll just talk through those. Does anybody have any questions about what we're going to do or how we're going to do it? Is there? That's nice.
Spies, you don't know what you're.
Hmm?
I didn't want to print it.
No.
I figured some alarm bell would go off as to.
Well, we'll go with that anyway. So I just want to remind you that we did a preliminary screening, or I know our memo advised you of this. In no means does that, should that, um, impede your decision-making as far as if you want to pull somebody that maybe didn't as tightly meet your selection criteria. We understand that. We just do that to sort of streamline the process and help you understand, by our analysis, who most closely, closely met your selection criteria. And so you'll just have to, um, so you'll just have to go slow when we are doing this initial polling, so I can make sure, like, I show the numbers. Is everybody ready? Is anybody going to say to me, Hannah, I know you said six, but I only have five? Or four?
Or eight.
So I'm bringing that up to say, six is the number. And so let's, let's do that, right? All right. Mr. President, she might go first.
Yeah, I'll go first. 1020, 696, 457, 185, 2123, 2126, and I did have a seven. So I'm going to throw that in there. 1254.
No! Let me repeat your six back to you. 1020, 696, 457, 185, 2123, 2126. Thank you. Who's willing to add?
I'll go.
Okay.
696, 457.
Okay, you have this one for me. 457.
185, 1524.
185, 1524.
Right. 2092, and 1020.
I'm going to keep those back to you. Not in the same order you gave them to me. 1020, 696, 457, 185, 1524, 2092. Thank you very much. Okay. 696, 457, 2116, 1123, 209. 209. Correct. And 185. So to repeat that one too. 696, 457, 185, 2123, 2116, and 209. Thank you. Who's next?
I'll go.
Okay.
2092.
I'm going to use that to make it stronger a little. Here we go here. 2092.
1020.
1020.
2119.
2119.
209.
209.
457.
457.
I have one more.
You do?
185.
I'm going to repeat those back to you. 1020, 457, 185, 2092, 209, and 2119. Thank you.
Sure, I'll go.
Thanks, Hannah.
209, 457, 2092.
You asked her that name.
696.
I'll pick that out.
2116, and 2123.
Going to repeat those back to you now. 696, 457, 2123, 2092, 2116, 209.
Great.
Thank you.
I'll go.
Okay.
696, 457, 1020, 185, 2116, 1524.
1524. Let me repeat that back to you. 1020, 696, 457, 185, 1524, and 2116. Thank you.
All right. 209, 457.
One second there, sorry. 209, I'm ready.
457, 1524, 185, 588, 2123.
Let me repeat those back to you. 457, 185, 2123, 209, 1524, and 588. Great. Thank you.
I know.
It's like doing the church.
I would sleep.
So why, why? I think I have to share something. There's so, so many things you've talked about before. Um, but I'm going to state them now, uh, because not everybody ever may have heard it before. So, meaning your audience, I know you've heard it. They'll be glad when this is done. It's terribly lecturing you. So just as a reminder, I may as well just not recommend courtesy interviews. So courtesy interviews are kind of things that the public and staff thinks that, um, if there are internal candidates, which I'm not confirming that there are, but if there are, then people think we should just automatically give them an interview. And who remembers why we advise against that? Anybody remember the reason that I cited for that in training?
Because it's to scare off, um, potential candidates.
It does scare off other potential candidates, so that's one reason. But also that if you're not, if the board is not very serious about someone's candidacy, giving them a courtesy interview is actually cruel. So it creates a weird distortion in the district because those names become public and people think they're a credible candidate, when the board may not really view them as a credible candidate. Um, also, it's very public for them, so they keep their hopes up, everybody's talking to them, and if, if there isn't genuine interest, then that can be devastating for them. So I want to remind you of that, and also to your point, when we call candidates and say, congratulations, Tecumseh Public Schools Board of Education has invited you for an interview, the first question they're going to ask me is, are any internal candidates being interviewed? And I cannot answer that question unless the internals have already, you know, they exist, that they've confirmed. Otherwise, I say, well, you can wait until I have additional information. But in fairness to them, right, at some point, I have to come clean with them about whether or not there are. So I say that to say, there is a dynamic, um, to this, that you just have to manage as board members and be prepared to get those questions as they come up. Sometimes what happens in districts the size, the size, people just assume people apply, whether they apply or not. And so that's its own weird dynamic. I don't know why that happens, but it happens, you know, pretty frequently. Were we in agreement on our numbers? Okay, all right. So I'm going to read back to you. Um, and so you'll probably want to have your notes in front of you and maybe even that candidate list that was on the top.
I can't. Yeah, but I can't get my memory to pull it. So I don't have that candidate list.
Do we have to collect it?
Oh, bless your heart.
We, yeah, we just have to collect it.
Thank you.
So I'm going to start with the, um, candidates that I have, that I had from the highest level of interest, and we'll kind of move through the decision by. So candidate 457 had seven preliminary votes of interest. I'm going to give you a second to check in on that individual. And just let you know that, you know, kind of right out of the gate, we would recommend with that level of interest that you plan to interview that person. Okay? Okay. Moving on to candidate 185, received six votes of interest. I'll give you a second to appoint yourself. Make sure you know who that is. Again, with. Again, with that much interest, we would recommend that you plan to interview that individual. So make sure nobody asks questions. Candidate six-ninety-six had five votes of interest. Again, with that level, same thing, we just automatically recommend that you interview that individual. So then, interestingly.
Wait a minute, how many did six-ninety-six get?
Five. So, so that would be three interview slots, you know, pretty well, pretty well bumped up. Interestingly, beyond that, you have three candidates that received four votes of interest. Now I'm gonna read off those numbers, so you can check who those are. And so, candidate ten-twenty. Candidate twenty-one twenty-three. And candidate two-oh-nine.
I mean, did each one of these got four?
Four. And I didn't humor you on your number seven.
I'm just kidding.
But often, this is where board numbers are like, you know what, I was, I was there, like, I was pretty close. I think what's important to note is, if there's one that you have particular concern about, you know, it may be worth talking to your fellow board members to say, you know, I'm really concerned about this one, and help me understand what you saw in candidate X-Y-Z. I mean, other than, I, I see no reason that you wouldn't simply determine that you're gonna interview all three of those folks who had four votes of interest, but you may choose to persuade yourself otherwise in the form of some misinformation. Do you want me to take them one at a time, or do you wanna take them as a group?
I think ten.
What, what? You have ten, twenty.
You know, I want that one in there.
Ten-twenty. Twenty-one twenty-three, and two-oh-nine.
Can I put out a opinion on why people like Jones?
Of course.
Okay. We said, from professional experience, it was both in our surveys, even the community that we went through in March and April, that we need to have a superintendent. As a superintendent, we need somebody with prior superintendent experience. We also need somebody with a strong classroom experience. And I think, because there are, is a split in the district, we need an outsider to come in who has the skills to pull, you know, some of these sides of these together. So that's all my instincts were, uh, superintendents. I look back on two-oh-nine, which is one that I could, I could go with two-oh-nine also.
Thank you.
Because he has, he has superintendent experience.
Thank you.
I agree with two-oh-nine.
Okay. So I'm hearing support for two-oh-nine.
And the twenty.
Well, I'm checking, I was like, I just didn't wanna presume.
Um. Ten-twenty, can I talk about that?
You were sitting there. So I was checking to see if you were.
You knew our number, um. Didn't stay anywhere very long at all. That's a real, that cancels that out.
That's why it wasn't you.
Yeah.
Ten-twenty was a strong candidate for me.
Yep, too much movement.
So let me, let me, let me draw your, well, it's weird that my computer's so bad. So from memory, I'm looking, um. The, the most recent two were shorter, but that was about trajectory. So this is a person who was in a district, stable, you know, moving right along, and then took a really big job, and then went, wow, this is not for me. Very different than from where I had been working. And then took the second job because knew that that big job was not the thing that that individual wanted to do. And so I only say this to say, sometimes you need help understanding the, the trajectory. So I think that's what's making you think it was a lot of jumping, because it really wasn't a lot of jumping. The, the two prior were, was, that was a promotion, right?
Ten-twenty was in two different districts, right?
Oh, more than that, I mean, the totality of the career. Um, but.
A superintendent. An assistant superintendent.
Right. Right. According to, to this. It, it, it's been an ongoing thing. For many years.
There were all, it was at least eight.
Yeah.
And no more than three years.
So, so you, you must be thinking like, four or five years in one position is not a lot. I mean, part of it's.
No, they were like two.
Yeah, they were like two.
Yeah, they're like, two years, next district, three years, next district.
Okay.
At some point, they become.
Three, two, two, four.
Maybe we're looking at that as being negative, but it's not.
It looks like.
No, no, I'm, I'm not looking, I'm looking to clarify the sequence of decision-making, that's all.
Oh, okay.
So you do what you, you need to do, but I wanted you to understand the current trajectory and why those last four steps, right? One is a downsizing back to a smaller district from that very large one. The two before were the same district in a, in a, a promotion. That's all.
My thought was, this person has the skill sets that we're looking for. One of the things that we can pin down in the, in the questions is.
Yeah, what do you know?
Right.
How long, do you wanna be here? I mean, what do you, what do you see your, you know?
So we put two-oh-nine in, so we have four now, right?
We have four.
You do?
But I, I thought ten-twenty was a strong candidate. I, I was concerned about the jumping to.
Yeah, that was my initial concern.
You know.
They weren't in my initial, um, list, but that pattern grew a lot. But I, I would be okay with trying to draw them out on the side interview. I, I get not having the right fit, but there's also, there, there was also that first type that comes in gung-ho and, you know, a couple of years is something.
Well, maybe that's.
I don't want that in this district.
Maybe that's, maybe you'll be okay with it, yeah.
I don't know. I don't know.
I'm okay with putting.
But I don't, I don't know if we necessarily wanna.
Yeah, you don't have to talk yourself into anything. I mean, certainly there is a skill set there. You do have to have a low, low comfort with that experience in these districts though. I don't have to, I don't, if I open mine, they can see it, that's why I'm not open.
Do you want my phone?
No, no, I don't need to, it's your, it's your decision.
Ten-twenty's the one that has overall, you know, he's jumping around, he's got twenty years of central office experience.
Right.
Would be very helpful. And we can find out what we need to know in the end.
It is a broad range of experience in different administrative roles, but every role is one administrative contract, whether it's a two-year, a three-year, you see that pattern.
Right.
And it does look like there was a climb, and then, um, probably, well.
My initial reaction is, I was kind of wondering why it may have been that one.
I think that there's still a struggle.
I think they're starting to handle it. Just a concern about the constant change.
And then that would be it, those five?
No, that would not be it, we're still talking. So.
You're hurried?
Well, I, I have a feeling I've been a squirrel, that's all. So, so there's another, uh, candidate that had four, um, votes of interest, twenty-one twenty-three. And so, just checking to know where we are on that.
What's the next, um, after that?
We have a couple of folks that have, um, two and three. So, looking at candidates twenty-ninety-two had three.
He was one of my picks, and I'll tell you what I like about him, is he has a lot of years in one district as a superintendent. And I think that's pretty unheard of, because isn't his average around five years or so?
Actually, a little south of five, yeah, you're right, so he had a nice run there.
Although I'm not sure how long they've been here.
But again, second. Maybe that'll help set the stage for a replacement.
Twenty-one sixteen also had three. Can I ask a question? I, I often have to, when people call me and ask me, I have to tell them why. And so without getting myself in a weird place, I just wondered about, um, fifteen-twenty-four. And, um, you guys did not show a choice of interest, but I'm just curious as to why.
I, I thought he was a good candidate.
I had him on my list.
You did, twenty-four?
There was only two of them that, and I just wanted to be able, I know I'm gonna have to say.
Because you were looking at him, like, did I say their own number?
No, I was, it's just hard to keep up with the numbers, that's all.
Yeah, he's.
That was my seven.
He was one of my choices, he's good.
Yeah.
Similar-sized district has maintenance and bond experience.
I, I picked that one.
So that's three.
Fifteen-twenty-four.
Well, then. I think that, I think that it could be our six.
I agree.
It isn't three. No, it is, it's because I had them in my mind.
We have five right now.
You do?
We have four-fifty-seven. One-eighty-five. Six-ninety-six. Two-oh-nine. And ten-twenty.
Right, and, and so all of a sudden, we're throwing, moving?
We're not throwing.
We're not, they had.
We were going back to check the threes, that's what we're in the process of.
Gotcha.
Because we.
The three of us were saying.
We looked at the fours, and then the question was, who got three?
Okay.
And I had one tally around that three.
Okay.
Which is what I was asking, so they just dropped.
We're discussing fifteen-twenty-four as three?
Yes.
I just have some notes, superintendent in similar-sized district, and as maintenance and bond experience, maintenance experience can come in handy. Five years as a superintendent. Eight years as a principal. And fourteen years as a teacher.
That's fifteen-twenty-four?
What was the discussion on, um, twenty-ninety-two?
The superintendent had nine years as superintendent.
Correct.
In one district.
Yeah, there was.
Is that number?
I did a little background. Well, I did a little background checking already.
It's, no, it's, it's, it's fair to say and accurately reported on here that he's currently not employed. Doesn't mean he's not employable, but he's currently not in contract.
Yeah, he also has no benefits.
He did, he absolutely did.
Yes.
I just didn't know that's where.
Why, didn't you say something about finding any two of them?
Because we were recapping the threes.
Okay.
So the, the, the candidates that received three votes of interest.
Right.
Fifteen-twenty-four. Twenty-ninety-two. And twenty-one sixteen.
Thank you.
Okay. So. You, I mean, you, you, there's no, I'm just gonna be honest. There's no reason for you to not interview six or seven people, you have very viable candidates. So even though this seems intense, we gotta sort this out, right? So here's who we've tentatively locked in, we haven't passed a motion, so nothing's official. We, we, we currently are talking about interviewing ten-twenty, six-ninety-six, four-fifty-seven, one-eighty-five, and two-oh-nine. Right? So.
So why not add twenty-ninety-two and fifteen-twenty-four?
I think fifteen-twenty-four is, should be considered.
Yep. Yes, I agree. I vote yes on fifteen-twenty-four.
Everybody is.
Yeah, that was on my radar, but you asked us to pick six, so you know, I, I. I kinda put them on a scale, and sometimes I just had to lightly blow on to see which one fell off.
Because you're all so good.
That's a good problem to have. And so, somebody floated the idea of, of moving them to interviewing seven, is that where you are, or are you gonna stick with six?
I'm happy with six. I'm happy with six.
I'm happy with you.
I'm good with six.
So we're putting fifteen-twenty-four on, and not twenty-ninety-two?
If, if that's what you all decide. I'm gonna read, read back the numbers, just wanna make sure you all.
I, I would like so, I mean, one that I would definitely wanna hear from, um, twenty-one sixteen, so. No, I'm not, I don't, I mean.
No. I, I did, but I.
Do you want your back?
Yeah, do you want my back?
So while you're looking at your sheets, let me read back to you, what's in play right now? Ten-twenty. Six-ninety-six. Four-fifty-seven. One-eighty-five. Two-oh-nine. And fifteen-twenty-four.
Yep, I'm good with that.
Do you have your selection criteria in front of you, so you can certainly take another look at that, if you just wanna reappoint and check in? I'm just waiting to get kind of visual confirmation of the more entertaining motion. One motion would just be the board extends an invitation to interview two of those six candidates. Keeping in mind, you know, I'm not, I'm not trying to sway you, but you could determine an alternative if one of those declined. I don't anticipate that any of those folks declined, it's not my conversations with them. Do you have any different news?
I have some conversations I have.
Okay, so the more entertaining motion, that the board would extend an invitation to interview, began in the ten-twenty, six-ninety-six, four-fifty-seven, one-eighty-five, fifteen-twenty-four, and two-oh-nine.
Need a motion.
Well, no, because now I'm still, I'm thinking about what you said. Is there any other discussion on, uh, twenty-one sixteen?
No. No, it was on the list, but I'm just not good at it.
Well, in that case, I make a motion that the board approve candidates four-five-seven, one-eight-five, six-ninety-six, two-zero-nine, ten-twenty, and fifteen-twenty-four, the, uh, the motion to establish that they're still as candidates.
Any discussion?
Second.
Any discussion? Call?
Aye.
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 Okay, well said, and so, like I said, we will reach out to these folks tonight, and you will know sometime afternoon tomorrow, um, not only that they've confirmed and just confirmed, but the timing of their interviews. I will say these interviews fall during the superintendent's conference. So, well.
You can't change them, right?
No. Do you remember what it was like to get these dates? I was here, do you remember that? And so that's, I mean, that's just how it goes, um, but there will be some kind of management that we have to do, just as far as time goes. Outside of that, any other, do you have any other questions, wanting to clarify anything? Alright, you did good work, not easy work, I understand that, but you came very well prepared, I appreciate that. Thank you.
How come they can't do them all on one daily on a Saturday?
You could, had you made the decision to do so.
I can't sit, alright, thank you, that'd be great, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kristen.
We'll see you next week.
Alright, I got a schedule for next agenda. Um, good news, I got the ICHU's campaign, I'm played facilities for. That's all we got right now. Regular scheduling. All right, this brings us to our second public comment portion of the meeting. Agendas are fully asked, each person to, limited three minutes. And I say, please come to the podium and stay here.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, Jackie Gregg. One of the reasons I came tonight was the seventh and eighth grade math book discussion on the agenda. My son in seventh grade brought his math book home today and I was wondering if you could give that, I really like it. But considering it, you know, lays out examples, he has his problems, it shows you which examples to refer to, different methods of how to solve it, I thought it was really, really, I appreciated it. I was a little confused by the discussion, a lot of the discussion, as to why the two different textbooks in seventh and eighth grade.
I was too.
That was offered and felt flat, and I guess I was just curious if there was any feedback on that. Otherwise, I like the book.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a reason there's two?
During their summer math meetings, they were given the choice.
Okay. So different styles?
I wasn't part of those meetings. The administrative team was not at those meetings. It was Greg and the math department.
Okay.
And they were given the choice.
Okay.
They're all using the app.
Yeah.
It's just a link.
Not as yet, though, but it is not up and running.
That is not the one.
Is it like a 50-50 split between teachers piloting the new book and...
No, it depends on the math class being taught. For instance, at the, at Eastene, you have pre-algebra B, which is eighth-grade math, they're the same thing, but also algebra one, geometry, and some algebra two. So there's several different courses there. Whereas at West, with the younger kids in seventh grade, you have pre-algebra A, which is the seventh-grade math, and one small section of algebra one. So it really just depends. And in high school, there's a lot of different math courses being taught, obviously. So it really just depends on the course.
Course-specific rather than...
Correct, not eight, not specific because there's so many different courses being offered at each level. It really depends on the class and the teacher teaching that.
Okay, and moving on to board member kind of discussion.
And once again, just, we've been off to a great start this year. And I couldn't we have your, our communication committee meeting has been set. So I've got that coming up. There was a couple people here that are on it tonight, but I think you left. But here's to you. So just really happy about all that coming together, so positive, such a positive start to the year and looking forward to continuing that. So thank you to everyone.
We do have a technology meeting coming up too that we've got scheduled that I'll be a part of, so...
Awesome.
Looking forward to that.
Are those getting posted, Carrie? I meant to ask you that.
I will report.
Awesome, okay. Thank you.
Okay, so I find it's a subject.
Yes, Jackie.
Where are those meetings posted? How do we get robocalls for these meetings? So where do you...
Website?
It'll be on our website.
Is there a reason those robocall stop?
I didn't know they had.
Yeah, there's not been a robocall for the last two meetings and it's not in the pop-ups on the website either.
Because there were other scheduled meetings?
Yeah, these are regular scheduled meetings.
Yeah, but there's, in the past, been calls about the regular scheduling.
There has been, so we'll have to check into that, so...
So what, what section from the committee names are on the board page?
It'll be on the board page and there will be a notice because it's a special meeting. It's a scheduled meeting, so...
Right. No, it'll be on the board page. Yeah, now that you say it, Jennifer, I don't think I got a robocall yesterday.
I did not either.
So...
I did notice that.
I never did.
I didn't think about it, but I...
We do that on purpose, so...
Who said those out, Devon?
Previously, it was Harley.
Okay.
We'll have to ask Ms. Phillips.
Okay.
We may have hit on one of them.
There we go.
All right, any more to the agenda?
So who's the board?